I had to go down the hall.
There's a power being on too far.
I can call under the table if you need.
If you do, plug in.
That's not happening, yes. We're giving this email to you.
Well, it's for the internet, yeah, that's why.
I'm not going to...
I mean, I'm...
Well, I'm going to use the liberty of being in the chair to make this statement. Ooh, that's alright. So what I'm going to say is that the Beestown Town Council has signed the Now Civility and Respect Pledge. Civility and respect should be at the heart of public life and good governance is fundamental to ensuring an effective and well-functioning democracy at all. The intimidation of youth bullying and harassment of councillors, clerks and council staff, in person or online, is unacceptable, whether by councillors, clerks, council staff or public members. Any person judged by the chair of this meeting to have breached this rule may be asked to apologise, withdraw their statement and/or leave the meeting. Right, Tom. To receive these extra apologies.
Apologies from Madutain, Jackie Diffie, Paul Tilsey, Jamie Wright, Peter LeRoy, Alex Lewitt and Simon Burney and Cornwall councillors, again, Peter LeRoy and Shaun Tilby.
To receive declarations of registered and non-registered disposal of community interest and non-registered interest. Dispensations? Right, minutes of the full council to receive confirmed sign, the minutes of council meeting have been 26 for January 23. Right, opposed or disapproved? All those in favour? Against? Right, minutes of committees to receive and note the minutes of the committee meetings listed below. Planning Committee, the 11th and 25th of January.
We have.
All votes in favour? Against? Right, correspondence received, the Tamar toll action group.
Well, I need to say this is as I've been so pleased to counsel, it's from a group who are aiming to abolish the tolls on the Tamar crossing. Really, they're seeking support. They would come and give you a presentation if you wish that. So really, you can note it or support it or take another approach you wish.
Would anybody like to say anything about this correspondence?
So I think there is an interesting biasness that happens in how you're charged one way or not the other. And on top of that, I mean, obviously you're expected to be able to return, so it should even itself out, but it doesn't because like this philosophical thing of the entry into one location which is more towards the end of the country. On top of that, generally tolls are seen sort of progressive in the fact that the more you use the road, like that means like you're able to use the road and therefore you're sort of paying for the upkeep of that road. But we also get, you know, we are charged vehicle tax. So, yeah, like I'm generally against tolls until they get rid of vehicle tax, in which case I'm like, okay, well, now you can start to toll people then. So that's my general point about it. Now, whether or not we want to actually set a statement or we want to think about it separately, that's another time. Like, I guess it's up to, I mean, looking at the size of the...
We don't right now.
We're just looking towards you as a chair.
Yeah, I mean, I would be broadly supportive of the idea because using the New Bridge in the Wales in the example, which is far bigger, far more expensive, as soon as that was paid off, they stopped taking charges. And you just used, like you say, road tax to cover it. So why were I still paying for something if it was built before I was born is frankly beyond me. So I would be supportive of the idea.
Yeah, it's just a point of information. When the bridge was built, it was said that the toll would exist to pay back the building cost of the bridge. However, what has happened in recent times is that the tolls on the bridge massively subsidise the Torpoint Ferry. So although we think of the bridge because we in view tend to use the bridge if we're going to go to Plymouth, also if you live out on the Rainy Peninsula, the bridge is a real pain in the bum and you use Torpoint Ferry and that is massively subsidised. So it's not quite the case of generic Cornwall kind of subsidises generic Devon. It's a bit of Cornwall towards the Rainy Peninsula and I suppose even theoretically down towards the Skard, which are subsidised with their crossing, which is the ferry crossing.
So would anybody like to propose anything? Do we want to just note this letter or would we like to support it or would we like to oppose it?
I don't think so. We just note the letter. Knowing people who have lived down this guardway and do use the ferry.
Anybody like to second that? Okay, all those in favour? Against? And abstaining?
That's correct. Actually, under correspondence, I also just note in the week we've had letters and or emails of thanks from the various awardees of grants, the Bude Harbour Canal Society, Canal Society, Council Support Group, View Pride, View's Tennis Club, View's Women's Group and In a Wheel of Fued, Jazz Festival, LD Coaching and the Pilot Pig Club and the Short Matt's Club.
Right, two senior Cornwall councillors present. There are some new councillors.
They aren't any present, but I... Peter Roy has provided an update which I have circulated covering economic development and growth, issues around what the full council, Cornwall council are doing, all the hundred per cent surcharge on council tax in second homes. There's boundary changes, but I don't think they affect us at all, I'm sure they don't. And there's issues around the hockey club and the use of the old weather pitch that Peter has raised. And he has put on there an issue, a little light up on the fisheries item which is later on in the agenda. And Shaun Tilby, who was intending on coming, also did write to me today to apologise and has basically, what did he add? Let's see in front of me. He talked about the meeting with the police crime commissioner and the fact that the new police station is opening, but the opening times are slightly variable at the moment whilst they're switching out stuff.
Have you got any questions that they would like to be recorded for Council LeRoy to ask at those dates?
Actually, I think something that hasn't been necessarily highlighted is the fact that there is a incoming group growth workshop that's happening at the Castle on Monday. So Monday at 10, if you know anyone that's thinking of any sort of project around the town or a struggling to start project or maybe you're a provider that could help with a project, then it's worth going to the Castle. They have an online thing as well, you can join in up, but that's at 10 o'clock and that's for us at my Cornwall council. That's something that we could get to Castle on Monday.
If we've got something to share.
Some space. I was wondering whether anybody would like to perhaps put in an agenda item about the hockey club at some point because it sounds like its relations have completely broken down there. I don't know, I'd quite like to hear another update personally. Lorraine?
I have.
Oh, Lorraine just put her hand up.
I was just saying, I know one of the guys, I can always get in contact with them. Do you know them better?
Probably not, no. We haven't met them with them. Sorry, I'm through the chat, sorry.
Tell us recently.
It was a while ago now, wasn't it?
I'm not sure what the latest is. Yeah, it was before, it was in the summer, actually, was the last meeting. And I think that Peter's probably been trying, Peter's been playing his way to try and get a meeting with the school, I believe. Is that what's come through all his stuff? And he's had a bit of a, a bit of a, I think he's hit a blank wall, I believe. But I don't know any more than that, so I'm sorry to mention that.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure how much I want to say in a public meeting because some of it is still sensitive, so to speak.
I'm not asking you to sort of say things now because it's completely off the path, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering whether that's something that we could ask Peter, whether we could have a bit more information about it.
Maybe we can ask the hockey club for an update.
I think also looking at alternatives and looking where we stand in terms of afterturn pitches, in terms of environmental things, it's probably worth letting the, your committee, the planning committee to start to have an idea about, especially when you talk about the special reading spaces around town and who's on that list and stuff and where the old weather pitch would go if there was to be something else.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say if I can just note or if it be noted that I'm offering to contact them because I know someone. Whoever decides, always give me a shout at any point.
Yeah, we can come back to the future meeting when we have some more detail.
Well, the hockey club have, the school have relented and allowed the hockey club to play their matches now, which they weren't before. That was the last information I had and didn't manage to get that across the line. And we have identified a few sites that we are investigating to cite other things. I think probably the best way to leave it for now.
So that might be something you could perhaps take that case with Peter and Lorraine.
Yeah, I don't want to sort of overplay my hand because Peter's heavily involved in it as well, so.
Okay, any other questions about Peter's report? Okay, public participation.
Have we got shoreline management plan? Or has Cornwall council got a shoreline management plan?
It's something that we've been hearing about from the Making Space for Sound project, which is a Cornwall council project. I don't believe we've got a shoreline management plan in place at the moment, but...
No, it says here, I didn't say Cornwall, it just says it. Shoreline management plans are publicly available documents.
I believe Cornwall council have a shoreline management plan for, I think for the whole of the Cornish coast, which will cover us. So there is a document, I'm sure I've seen in the past, because there is issues about that hold to line and stuff like that.
So how would you get on with it then?
Would you like somebody to contact you with a link to it or something like that?
No, that's not going out at all.
I'm sure if you come into the office, I'm sure we will point you in the right direction.
It's available if you could Google it.
Yeah, you can just Google it.
I don't think the public does that, so there are other ways. I'm sure we can find you...
Oh, it just sort of said, yeah, well, it says you could say, or, but most people don't know their existence, but, you know, I thought I'd like find out what's going on about that. I'll come and see you, any particular diet.
We're getting wet, mate, that's the bottom line.
Eh?
We're getting wet, that's the bottom line.
I'll have a look and see if I can download it for you, I'll get it for you.
Right, proper job, thank you. What if we were getting wet? It's not raining.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. Keith, I think you've just said you've had letters of thanks from awardees of grants?
Yes.
When were the grants awarded?
Last week. Last week's meeting.
At last week's meeting? What meeting was that?
It was meeting of the council last week.
What, was it an extraordinary meeting or was it the...
Yes.
Right, that's not your policy, it's stated on your website. Apparently the grants were decided before council meeting.
It was a meeting of the full council. An extraordinary meeting, it's still meeting of the full council.
So not, no public participation then? No public...
It was a public meeting, it was on the boards and on the website.
Okay, where was it at Thomas's meeting?
On our council website and on the boards.
Okay, didn't notice that.
But that was an extraordinary meeting. Yes.
I never seen those on.
Okay, would you like to...
Yeah, hi guys. Just wanted to say actually thank you for awarding us a grant at View Pride. We really appreciate it and just wanted to give you guys some positivity. Thank you, that was all.
Okay, one more? Right, item eight, to consider request from a member of the public to fly the flag during May to mark the 80th anniversary of the Atlantic.
And I put out the request to councillors, the mayor of the public asked for either Union flag or the white end sign to mark that and suggested that Sholder Hill or the Elizabeth mask on the Downs were the two places that they would prefer to have liked that flag. It is different. It is a category A flag, it's a white end sign as well as a Union flag, a category A flag, so no external permission is required. It's the council's.
Yeah, I just want to say this is a great idea. It's part of our kind of history in our community and, yeah, the 80th anniversary of something really significant. I think it's a really good idea. Does everyone know what the flag looks like? So it's essentially like the white George's cross with the, in the left-hand corner, the white end sign. I've been doing some research about naval flags in the Saturday and it's kind of interesting. And it said the Union Jack is like in the left-hand corner, so there's different like flags for merchant name and stuff, which I'm learning about, which is really interesting. So, yeah, I think this is a great idea. Just want to note that like tone of the request is a little bit, yeah, a bit spiky, is that the word? But other than that, yeah, completely fine. I like the concept and I think it's, yeah, it's great.
I just, I guess there's been, we've not got anything else found for that specifically at the moment, have we?
No, at the moment, no, there are no other requests in May.
Yeah, that's all. And do we actually own the...
I would say, the only question would be if you wish to fly the white end sign, which obviously is more kind of related to the event. There would be a cost because we don't own any, so thirty-odd pound of flag. I mean, there's different sizes and different qualities, but, so there would be an expenditure for that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems as if flags are going to be a little bit of an ongoing issue. Personally, I take the view that the most appropriate flagpole would be the mast on the Downs. I don't have a problem with the white end sign. It should also be remembered that that represents the Royal Navy and the Battle of the Atlantic. There were a great amount of merchant ships that were sunk, a great amount of merchant seamen who lost their lives. So as to whether the white end sign absolutely is the best flag to fly, I don't know. I would have thought the Union Jack is just as appropriate because it is less specific. But then again, you could argue that white end sign at least is a naval flag and represents sort of all maritime participation. But I think moving forward, we need to be perhaps a little bit more focused on what flags go on, what pawns, and also perhaps a little bit less inclined to sort of fly flags for full... and also perhaps a little bit less, um, inclined to, to sort of fly flags for full calendar months. Um, perhaps this request for the eightieth anniversary did, would be appropriate for full calendar months, but when the flag policy was first discussed at oversight, I think we were thinking in terms of flags being flown for days or, or at most weeks. And it seems that, uh, you know, people are requesting very long periods of time, um, and I have some reservations over that.
Um, I was just gonna say, hey, if we could just do a Union Flag, um, which I'm, um, why not, would be, you know, a good thing, it represents a flag. Could we do a social media post at the same time to explain why we're flying it? And then that would cover maybe both bases.
Okay.
Um, in regards to people requesting to fly flags, as long as they weren't, in my eyes view, if there's no one else asking for that one, if there was someone else wanting like the first, we'd, we'd make a little talk, but there's no other flag competition.
Yeah, I do tend to agree with Kevin almost, that, um, I think flags could be potentially becoming an issue. Um, for those who don't know about the White End Sign, the White End Sign is technically the flag of the Royal Navy. Um, you've got the red end sign, the white end sign, the blue end sign, and originally it was because the Merchant Navy were the important group. Um, there is nothing to say that you cannot fly the White End Sign on land, but if you want to fly the White End Sign on ship, you have to have permission, because technically you can only fly it on a Royal Navy ship. Any other ship has to have permission. Just to bring a bit of background to it. And the reason the Union Jack is in the top left-hand corner of it is because if a flag is flying and there's not much wind, that is the bit, bit of the flag that nearly always is visible.
Um, so it could be worth, um, I think that, that there's a way forward here, I think there's a general agreement. And, but then I think almost there might actually be, like, actually a small response to them as well, to suggest that maybe in the future, if they're going to also think about the, the, the red version of the flag as well. And if that was, okay, because if it is about, specifically about that wall, um, then like that might, they might want to think about that. Happen necessarily, for about, might, might be an option, basically. So I would, um, if you came with right now, I would like to propose that we agree with the request in its entirety and that we offer that respo, as a, as a response about, yes, informing them about the red merchant flag as well. And if that's what they want to do in the future, or to come back to us for, then they're free to, basically.
Okay, and are we saying in terms of our proposal that we'll go back to them and ask them which, the Union Flag or the White End Sign they want to be flown?
I would suggest that the requests, the requests are that they're pleased with either.
Yeah.
The council may choose to fly as much, or, it's, it's, obviously, at the end of the day, the flags the council chooses to fly is in your decision.
Do you do flagpole fly for the?
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yes.
Will that be flying for the whole month of the coronation, or, okay, so?
Well, actually, to be honest, we are waiting the protocols in, to be, and that's the only competition, and, yes, sorry, yes, thank you, our resident flagger.
Excellent.
Yeah, obviously, if there is any, um, no, any decree or, or the, what's expected over the coronation, that will take precedence.
Yes. Okay, quickly.
Um, just as there's a choice of flags here, and they're asking particularly, um, the Union Flag or White End Sign is flown on Sholder Hill and the Downs flagpoles for not to make. Um, perhaps the Red End Sign on the Downs and the White End Sign by the Memorial? Safe by two flags?
They don't specifically ask for anything, are they?
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm a bit nervous about, about putting up a flag that they haven't asked for. This is why I said about, um, going back to them and informing them, that if they want to come back and change their mind, then they can. But otherwise, like, we just agree with what they've suggested. I feel, I, personally, I feel like we could go back to them, as you say, and say, well, which one do you want us to fly? We're, we're comfortable with either the Union Flag or be flown, you know, in this instance anyway.
Most, yeah, if, if the council is minded to be, allow this, as it were, um, can you, if you form a resolution that says, yes, we, we, we are content to allow, and I will sort out with the, um, applicants as to exactly whether it's Union Red or White End Sign. If you're content with that, because I, you know, flying one of each does sound like reasonable compromise, given the, the numbers I have read, which are quite horrific on, you know, sort of both, both sides of those services. Um, but rather than, well, you're going to come back to council again, so.
And also presumably we're happy for you to spend the money on buying what they're done.
If, might need to buy two flags, yes.
Does that sound like a reasonable proposal? So what we're proposing is that we're happy, we're content with this as it stands, but we were asked, Keith, to sort out the, um, you know, the exact.
Yes, yeah, so you can tell them to fly two flags in recognition of the, uh, matter of the Atlantic, and be authorized me to, uh, discuss with the applicant exactly which two, and, and to, or have two flags if necessary.
I was, I was just gonna make, um, a very swift point around, do we have a, a process in place for people making requests? Is it just a case of, they might alert it to yourself for?
Yes.
I guess I second that proposal.
But, um, okay, that's, so, so all those in favour? Is that a good point?
It's a good point, isn't it?
Lovely, thank you. Right, so another innovation from the council, we might have to adopt the fossil fuel amendment.
Okay. Um, I, uh, yeah, I'm happy to, 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 okay. Um, I'm not sure procedurally how this works, but, um, what do you, is it best if I read through the, uh, the motion? Is that how it works, or?
You don't have to read it word for word, if, um, if you, if you can work on the basics, people have, have read through it. If you want to highlight, you know, some points for us, that would be, that would be really useful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so the fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty, um, has been in, or is developing at the moment to, um, I don't know, that's my thoughts. In essence, signing the, the treaty gives us, um, gives us the opportunity to, or discussing whether to sign the treaty, gives us the opportunity to decide whether to join government cities and councils around the world, um, who are making moves to phase out the leading cause of climate crisis, which is fossil fuels. Um, fossil fuels account for eighty percent of all climate, all emissions since the Industrial Revolution. In essence, the, the motion that I've put in, or that I am proposing is, um, is to join the call for a global treaty to phase out fossil fuels, or adjust phase out of fossil fuels across the world. The, the treaty, um, well, my, my reasoning behind bringing it was, um, as a coastal community, we're extremely vulnerable to the effects of, um, coastal erosion, sea, uh, sea level increases and extreme weather events, um, which are unlikely to cause significant change to the structure of the community that we're representing. Um, for me, signing this is, is a small action, it's, it's free, it's free of charge, it doesn't cost us anything. Um, and it gives us the opportunity to lobby our colleagues throughout Cornwall, um, and at county level. And, uh, one of the points is the request to write to our local MP, um, asking him to sign the, the treaty so that we can lobby at national level as well. Um, yeah. Hope dies last, as they say. Uh, yeah, so I personally signed the treaty, uh, some time ago before joining council, um, for two reasons. Um, one was because it is and has been my home for a long time, and because I see that, that actually we are very vulnerable. And because, um, it's an action that links our local concerns with a global context and a global movement for change. Um, uh, so bringing it to the council seemed like the next logical step. Um, and I'm grateful that the, for the conversation being possible. Um, I saw the, uh, a line from Peter's report, actually, um, which said that if we were to sign this, um, it would be the first action of any council in Cornwall, um, in, in doing so. But one of the points is to, to request, um, or at least inform the other councils in Cornwall. Um, we're a vulnerable area and it seems logical to work together on this. Um, thank you for listening, apologies for the bump, please.
I'm fully in favour of this, I think it's great. Um, what, signing treaties is great, um, however, I mean, we have had requests in the past to look at our investments, um, and whether or not we are investing in fossil fuels in terms of the, the, uh, the reserves and banking arrangements and pension arrangements. Um, and I would like to see the two done at the same time, um, so that we sign the treaty and then we prove that we mean it by actually, uh, divesting fossil fuels in our investment, because it's a really powerful tool and it sends a very powerful message. So that, I guess that's a question, that's a yes, but a question, Keith, as to where we're at with that and how that happens.
I'm racking my brains on a, we, we, we don't, we don't directly invest in that sense. Um, obviously, we do have funds with a bank, uh, but we, you know, we, we, we don't like that. I will, I'll have to double check where their position on that, I have asked them in the past. In terms of Cornwall Council's pension fund, there is a report, they are, certainly are working on this, so they're, and again, I haven't all the details to my, top of my brain, but there is a report I can share, and Cornwall Council is part of a wide, or Cornwall Council Pension Fund is part of a wide group of pension funds that are using an investment strategy which does have decolonisation in it. Whether it's gone far and hard enough, I, I couldn't necessarily vouch, but I went to a briefing not that long ago, and it certainly went on their agenda. So I can give you some comfort.
Yeah.
I'll dig out that report and share.
And banking for, for the council?
I will, I will have to look back, as I say, we don't, it's not that, you know, we as a council don't hold shares or portfolios that directly invest anywhere. Uh, I will have to double check what our bank does with the surplus funds that, because it's got interest on.
Yeah, because it tells us our reserves are being used for, um, you know.
Although, I would say, we, we do use a bank which is, services our sector, it's not, it's not, you know, a high street bank as it were, or, or a, you know, a, like a investment bank. So, um, I'm sure it has ethics in it, so.
We can make noises in our system.
I will, I will see what's, I'll double check.
Sorry to derail the conversation, thank you.
Okay. Um, my first reaction when this was floated, uh, a little while ago, was to be very concerned that the council sort of opened itself up to mockery and rision. Um, you know, would we sign the nuclear weapons, non-proliferation treaty, and if we did, what good would it do other than virtue, virtue signal that nuclear weapons are a bad thing? And I kind of worried about the optics of it, and I sort of imagined myself in public bars with lots of mocking voices. And then I had a word with myself, because I thought, oh, ultimately, this building could be underwater in a few years' time. And a big chunk of you could be underwater in a few years' time. And many people in our community don't fully appreciate the very precarious state this town is in. And if signing this actually raises some awareness and gets some conversation going, whether we are mocked or not, um, is a lesser issue than raising the awareness. So, uh, I am inclined to fully support it.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I'm fully on board with this, but Ethan knows already, because I was in the Environment and Climate Change Forum, where you brought this up. I think this is great, and as much as it may seem to some as virtue signalling, it's the start of a conversation where we begin to actually hold ourselves accountable. And if we sign this, that literally gives all of the kind of ammunition we need to then take that to the banks that we hold our money with and our procurement policy forum that's coming up, and actually, you know, put this into practice in the real world, because it may just be a treaty that we're signing up to, but it's, again, naming our colours to the mast, to use a Nike analogy. Um, and I think we should also, we should also add in, if, if you'll let me amend it, um, to inform like the area network as well, as Scottman, so like write a letter communicating our wish for them to also, because that's part of the community, so talking about how vulnerable our community is, it's not just Beeden Stratten Parish, because we know about the interconnectedness with all those other parishes, so that, yeah, that's my only, like, thing to say. But yeah, great, and thanks for bringing it to the table, because I think it's brilliant and, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think it's a great idea in terms of optics, because unfortunately they are important as well. Perhaps we could put something out there saying, kind of, what might say about what we're trying to do at the same time? So we're not just signing treaty and then going, well, that's lost out, and we're actually doing this, this and this, so maybe we could, yeah, roll it out at the same time. And I spend a lot of time in public houses with mocking voices, and I think they'd be into it.
Well, I, I'll just say as well then, you know, obviously I, I, I do support this fully, I think that, um, I think that there's a piece of civic leadership here, where in, in effect, what we're saying is that we're kind of putting our heads above the parapet, that people might think that Beeden, Beeden Stratten Town Council is so small that it's not worth us doing any of these kind of things, but, um, I don't think that's right, and I, I think even as individuals, us, us signing a treaty like this would be powerful. So us as a town council, signing it is powerful, and we know also from when we did our housing crisis, um, statement, that other town councils and council in Cornwall do not what, um, what we suggest, as we take up what they suggest. So that, you know, it's not, you know, we're not alone in thinking this, and even if we were, it's still important to make a stand. That's my view of it. And also, I just want to say the Unity Trust Bank that we're with, um, is the sixth, um, highest rated in terms of ethical consumer. So there's obviously something good going on there, but there are, um, it's difficult with business banking, isn't it? To actually get a, get an ethical bank account, which is much higher than that, strangely.
So, um, so there's, there's obviously the threat of proposal here, but it sounded like there was some other tiny, like, adjustments, so could we have?
Do you know what I've got?
Yeah.
B S T C endorsed the call for the fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty. Right to Cornwall Council, all councils within Cornwall communicating the decision, and urging them to pass a similar motion of their own to call on Cornwall Council to commit to divesting their pension fund from fossil fuels, right to Scottman and the CNP communicating their decision, and urging them to sign the treaty, and call on the government to stop fossil fuel licenses, to write to the new climate partnership, communicating their decision, and urging them, all partners, to pass similar motions of their own.
And also to review our investments. And also to review our investments and saving where possible as well.
I think we've already got a resolution place to talk about that we want to make a position statement.
Yes, we are coming back to the old cycle of it.
Yeah, I think it's something about the comms, isn't it? Saying that we, we want to, when we talk in the comms about this, we want to cite the fact that we are doing.
Looking in as well as, yeah.
We, yeah, our electricity problem, I presume it's a green supplier. It is, yeah, positive energy, isn't it? Our, our electricity supplier was changed when passed the, um.
Yeah.
Climate emergency.
When we next renewed, yes.
Okay, so that's the proposal. Would you like to propose that, Ethan? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I agree entirely with everything. I always have reservations though and it's slightly in the wording, renewable energy, green energy. I would like to see not just us, but the entire world throw non-exploitative in front of that phrase. Because a lot of green energy, a lot of renewable energy comes from people currently working in slave labour. And we've, we've just had that big battery plant up north. I can't remember exactly where it was, but it got a hundred million pounds worth of funding. It's folded. So any batteries we buy are going to be built by Uighur Muslims in China, basically at gunpoint. Which.
Are you happy with that, Ethan?
So just, just to throw in non-exploitative sources, I think adds another powerful message. Especially if we're going to Scottman to sort of say, let's go on, let's do this. I mean. More chance of pulling clean water out of the ocean.
In other words, for non-exploitative sources.
Invest in transformational plan to ensure 100% access to renewable energy.
I just put to endorse the call for fossil fuel non-perforation treaty. I didn't put the rest of it in. You want everything in.
We can, it's in the, the motion here, so.
Yeah. I think when we write a letter to people.
Yeah.
When that.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's funny sport, but I just want to add that little.
Okay, so you're happy to propose that with those changes, Ethan?
Yeah, so I propose we carry the motion with the associated changes.
All those in favour? You can vote your own.
Full notice, yeah.
And abstained. Thank you very much and thank you for bringing it on. It's nerve wracking, isn't it, bringing you, bringing you from a place so good? Right, item 10. My goodness, request for a reviewed community area network response concerns raised by the local fishing authorities. That B S T C writes to former I F C A expressing concerns over significant depletion of local lobster crab stocks caused by large vessels with bio, bio tanks operating in shore. B S T C offers full support to the proposed emergency bio-laborary restrictions of larger vessels with vivia tanks to operate on outside of six millimetre.
So, um, I'm going to ask some more experienced people in the audience, but I thought there was already a law saying you were limiting the size of vessels for four miles. I don't, I don't need to.
First, I'm only passing on the, uh, the reference that came by the community.
Really, we're limiting obviously the number of fishing vessels we'll stop. Like, you know, if we can just limit the larger ones, that's great. But also I was like, I thought we already had something.
I mean, that would probably assume that the community area network could have got their information.
The only thing I can add is a, a council boy came to see me who was at that meeting.
Yeah.
And evidently last year a vessel did come in to the, the bay and sucked up all the lobsters and disappeared off. And this is what's driving to stop or repeat of that happening. Can't really vouch for these size 12 metre vessels is the size that's been mentioned in the council boy's report. So that's, that's the, the detail. I can tie up that, either, the rain.
Well, it's what Peter said, really. Yeah, some are coming on who put up and it really affected a lot of people and their businesses.
So the area network hopes that supporting this, uh, this call for the ban will help that situation.
I always thought part of the issue is, is possibly because, um, the vessels that are meant to police this sort of thing are feeling far between. And this is just an attempt to try and draw attention to it. Because these vessels, they come in, they've got huge tanks on them, all the lobsters and crabsters go into the tanks. They kept alive until they go back to shore. So I, I would fully support.
This does seem to imply that, um, there's another emergency biol need rather than enforcement of an existing biol. Tom?
Yeah, um, I did do a little bit of reading and research about this, but I'm a bore everyone about it. I think what Mike said about the last proposal on the table about things being exploitative, this is literally an example of exploitative practice in our bay. And means that our local fisher, fisher people.
Fishing?
Fishing people, but, you know, people that do fishing. Are unable to do the kind of sustainable fishing that they would like to do to serve the local economy and restaurants and, you know. So I think this is a complete no brainer. And, yeah, if it's to draw attention and create a new biol, great. I'm sure there'll be some very peed off lobbyists that have vested interest in this not happening. But I would love it to happen because we want to make sure we support our, you know, our local people. So, yeah.
So go, carry on.
The boat they're all about is out of Patstow.
The large boats?
Yeah. And he's fished right up through and he's got, his range 50, 60 long. And he'll come in, he hits, he goes again. And I don't say, are you going to stop a boat from Patstow fishing in Cornish waters? This is pretty odd before. This, you know, Cornish, well, Cornish men fishing in Cornish waters.
So it's, sorry, so just to, to, um, so the restriction to it being like only outside of six multiple miles from the coast is trying to preserve obviously the main.
I quite agree with it. I can't say you're going to force it. Because it's a parent, I've been up, obviously it's a parent for two or three years. They never bothered to come up here.
But maybe they will.
Maybe they will, yeah.
If we shout loud enough. And that's the point, isn't it? Raise awareness. And it's not, like lobster stocks and crab stocks take a long time to replenish because they're very slow growing. They get to a very old age, as old as human beings when we eat them. But yeah, so we do. It's pretty amazing.
So, yeah, if we go with that and just attach an amendment to, in a call to ask for the same power for the waters to be controlled from time to time. Enforcement, exactly. You get even bigger Dutch boats hide behind the island when the seas rough and go over sheltering from the storm. Yeah, you know, it's, it's been going on for a long time and everybody knows it and.
Is that a proposal we made or can I make the proposal?
You can make a proposal.
I mean, the proposal or for that?
For that plus, plus the enforcement. Yeah. Okay, well, that's been proposed. Any second now? Okay, all those in favour? Right, to agree the approach formulating response to the consultation on the Cornwall council devolution deal.
Well, I'll talk to it unless anyone else is, uh. Obviously, Cornwall council is doing its consultation on the devolution deal. It would seem appropriate for the town council to make a response formally. And you can only do that by taking a position. Well, I'd actually, or briefly, there is a meeting next Monday at the Falcon as a public meeting. Those who wish to hear direct from Cornwall council what the devolution deal is about. There is a, a paper here that they have put together as to the benefits. But they ask some specific questions at the end in terms of the consultation response and with the, you know, the ability to just be made formally or by the town council. Really, what I would suggest is, because these kind of things don't really work very well with, um, eleven off you trying to agree which box to tick out of these 15 boxes or whatever that are there. But what I would suggest is if you can give a, take a resolution around the steer, as it were, the will of the council, then I can sit down with one or two main councillors that you decide on just to pin up the final bits of the box and make that response. And the questions really are in terms of, are you, um, do you approve or how, the levy of approval or disapproval around the, uh, the powers and funding that this devolution deal would get? Um, there's some questions around various parts, a little bit detailed in terms of different amendments. There's a question around whether the, in favour or not around the powers and funding that they deliver Cornwall's priorities. And then probably the, the big question probably is, within all of that, the governance question of do we accept the changes to the, um, mayoral governance arrangements? So if the council probably wants to, or councillors want to discuss kind of just generally, does the deal look good in terms of, do you have your feelings around the deal and the benefits it may bring? And then secondly, the stance around the mayoral, resolve that and then delegate the, the. Councillor to.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly echo. I, I've seen the camp, previous council tried to complete a, a consultation in a committee meeting and it was, it was a bloodbath. So I really recommend it.
I actually think that we shouldn't have a stance and really promote this as much as possible to the public to get them to, to take part in this consultation as much as possible. Because I think when you're talking about how someone's going to be led, I don't think. I, I, I really think that, you know, we've been picked to do certain decisions, but like to decide how we're going to be led on a Cornwall council level, I think should be, I mean, I mean fundamentally, we should have had the, the, what's it called, referendum that they were going to do, but they decided against it. So like, I think that we should, I, I, I think we really should just actually, I know we've probably got very strong personal opinions, but maybe we should be keeping that as personal opinions and really getting our, and spend our efforts really getting this out and about basically, um, to our constituents.
Um, I, I think that's a really good, a really great idea. It wasn't what I was going to say, actually. Um, but, uh, I mean, I've, I've been listening to, to the kind of conversations about this. And a lot of information about free ports and devolution. And actually, for me, this is a big worry. Because it's the, the document that we came through and had a look through today. Look, on the surface, it looks great. You know, it's all about jobs and it's all about housing and it's all about, um, investment and this, that and the other. And I beware the devil that comes with a smile on his face. Because I think we will be tying ourselves into potentially becoming an investment zone, which, and what comes with that is a winding back of environmental and planning legislation, which basically allows, I mean, the, the conspiracy theory would take you as far as free ports, which would take you as far as Cornwall being run at a corporate level by corporations. And actually, that means fewer workers' rights, fewer environmental rights, lax planning laws in order to build factories on greenfield sites and all the kind of stuff that I stand against. So I think, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to be asked to make a decision on this until I've seen, been to that meeting. And also I think it's unfair of us as a council to decide the fate of Cornwall. Because I think it should be the Cornish people that should decide. Thank you.
I'll take the opposite view as to whether this council should have a view on this. I think it's probably the most important change to Cornish governance since maybe the Black Prince or something like that. Oh, I'm not a great expert in history, but the, the end of the Stannery Parliaments perhaps. To me, it is absolutely everything that has been said, um, on the downside. It is a bribe, it is a bribe to basically sell Cornwall to. To, to, to the, you know, I'll, I'll say, I'm, I'm not a conservative, although I might be seen conservative in some way. It is a bribe to put a Tory at the top of Cornwall who will impose Tory values on Cornwall and who will sell Cornwall down the river. That is the way I look at it on it. Um, that is why the government are bribing the people of Cornwall to vote for it. It, there is little doubt in my mind that any elected mayor would have a blue rose out on him and would not have the interests of North Cornwall at heart because that isn't where most of the voters are going to live. So for all kinds of historic reasons and practical reasons, I think we should make a, a, a case. If we're signing a, a non-perforation fossil fuel treaty tonight, then we should be signing a, no, a single mayor leave the flawed but essentially rather more democratic council system alive.
So I just want to say as well, I absolutely agree with you, Kevin. I think that it's beholden to us as a, as a town council to, to make our views known. We, you know, we are probably closer to a lot of the politics of this county than lots of other people. And they would effectively, you know, put their trust in us to, 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 you know, or delegated us to, to have that, um, that eye on politics. Now, we're not going to be able to swing it. Our town council isn't going to be able to swing this, but our town council is a voice. And I think if we don't put that voice in, we, we, we take that voice away from, from our public. And they clearly will be able to answer the consultation as well. But if we feel so strongly about this, that, you know, that we, we don't want to have this mayor and, you know, we think that the referendum is a complete dereliction of our duty and now this has been imposed on us, then as I say, in my personal views, I think it's beholden on us to actually complete this consultation. Sorry, do you want to say something?
Oh, sorry, I got it.
Um, thank, thank you. I'm kind of, I'm sort of now wavering, which is unlike me. But I, I think, I, I think Ken's absolutely right, actually. And I also think Kate is right. So, but actually I want to make a decision when I've been properly informed. So actually it feels like this is a week too early that we should actually go and find out what Cornwall are saying about this and then make our own minds up.
But the consultation to be completed by the 17th.
Close on the 17th.
On the 17th. So they, so we have to vote on it and then they have a meeting afterwards to tell us all about it.
I think, I think what we could do is we could, you know, as Keith suggests, we could nominate. We could, you know, agree at home and then we could nominate Keith plus one or two other councillors to complete this after the meeting on Monday. And, and I suppose if those councillors felt after the meeting on Mon- Monday, you know, honest, you know, half felt that they don't, no longer represent the council, then, then we could say, well, we won't complete it in that case. You know, that, that the information we get from the meeting actually turns, then we can.
Yeah, I would just say there has been a survey online, which I've completed and I'm sure lots of other people have completed and I've pressed lots of people's complete. Where this thinking comes from is the same sorts of people who promise us lots of hospitals that have not materialised. This is, this is great thinking, great promises, but they just will not materialise. And it is literally going to be selling Cornwall to the highest bidder. And I totally agree that we as a council ought to take a stand on this. And I do think, yes, I'd be up to a meeting on Monday to see what they've got to say about it. But I just think they're trying to give us a sugarcoated pill.
So can I suggest then that perhaps we first of all vote on whether we want to complete the consultation or not? Is that, would that be a way to do it? And then if, if we decide that we do want to. Then we want to agree what the tone is and then we want to agree who, 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 you know, if, if that, if it kind of works through like a waterfall of decisions.
Who's not for it?
Well, before, before we, before we start voting, does anybody want to say anything about the kind of, um, shall we fill it in or shall we, shall we not fill it in? Well, before, before we, before we start voting, does anybody want to say anything about the kind of, shall we fill it in or shall we, shall we not fill it in?
Oh, sorry, Elaine. I was just wanting, not about the, want to fill it in so much, but, um, someone came along from that to the, um, Community Network panel meeting. So I've heard the, the meeting, I've heard the, the presentation and, um, yeah, it sounds great.
Did it sound like Brexit?
It was a fart. They put a bit of glitter on it, yeah, it was fantastic, but I think, I think the problem, my, this is just literally my opinion, my opinion. We as BUDs have an identity at the moment, if we do this, we're going to lose it and we're going to get forgotten as we already, it's going to make it ten times worse. Um, but then that's my personal opinion again, sorry, um, that's after seeing the presentation.
Um, if it's our responsibility to have a voice, which I think it is, right? Isn't it our responsibility to also communicate what we think to the people of BUDs? And I think we have to think really carefully how we're going to do that in a way that's not just our personal opinions. That's all, it wasn't really a question, it was just, it would be need to think about.
Well, I would suggest, I mean, I, I, I'll take it on board that, yeah, you don't have to give an opinion, though the consultation does, is from everyone and there are, there is a box to represent the town council, as it were, so that, and that are expected. You can debate as to how, have a view as to how much, notice your take of any consultation, but clearly as a town council, you have the option to speak for the town. You can only do it on your judgment, I mean, they have come down to your personal, uh, take on what you've been presented and what they've just said here and your feelings have been expressed, so. So I would, I would suggest, you know, it's well within order to make that, make that presentation, but you have to really do it today and then we will put that out. So this is the council's view on what the council understands and we will make people aware that they have until the seventeenth to respond themselves, so we can wrap the two together. And encourage individual responses.
Is there any way you can do it not online?
I don't know.
Because you said you did it online, well.
There's a printout, yes.
Go down to the Chrome app.
Oh, on Monday night, yeah, but I just wanted to know you can fill it.
I've got to spare one of those, the print's not, um, pretty small, I'm afraid.
Well, yeah, um, I was just going to say, like, both Katie's point about trying to actually spread the word as broadly as possible comes in line with what our overall stance is, and if we, overall, there's been some strong things said, but overall, if we do not feel happy, content, safe with the devolution deal that is on the table, then I think it's incumbent upon us to share that in the simplest terms, like, so we're not talking about the nuance, we're just saying, like, we as a council are not broadly happy or supportive with, if that's what everyone feels, because I think that's, because it's so nuanced and there's so much detail, individual people obviously are going to read this and take their own, you know, view as they should. But I think we need to, like, refine it to, it's like, you know what I mean, like, as it should have been, everyone asked, is this what you want, yes or no? Like, we have to treat it like a referendum type, like, communication, if that makes sense, um, I don't know. Just to keep it simple for the general public who we're communicating with, because otherwise it's like, oh, what's that, readings of, oh, I'm not reading, okay, and I haven't filled it out. And we actually just want people to fill it out, because that's what's most important, so, yeah.
Okay, yes, I, I do find Cornwall council's consultations are sort of almost designed to make you give up.
Yeah, sticking the fog, the fog.
Okay, so, so my suggestion is that, that first of all, we take a vote on whether to complete the consultation as a town council or not. So I'd like to propose that we complete it as a town council. Okay, all those in favour? All those against? And abstaining? Okay, so I think we, we say we will complete it, a version as a town council, obviously we've got these free to do their own as well. So the, the second question is, um, in terms of the tone, I'd like to propose that we are broadly not in favour of having a, um, a mayor. Or, or having a change to the governance arrangements as proposed by the devolution deal. So can I, all those in favour? All those against? And abstaining? Okay.
Sorry, Catherine Hannah.
Sorry, yeah, thank you.
So the third question is, um, who would like to work with Keith following on from the meeting on Monday to complete the questionnaire? And so can I propose that, um, Biggie and Martin are voted to take up sort of this?
That's meeting on Falcon Monday.
Yep, meeting in Falcon. Okay, all those in favour? All those in favour? Can vote for yourself?
Yeah, I can vote for myself, yeah.
You're a favour as well, okay, so all those against? And abstaining? All right, thank you. And then the final thing just to say is that we want some communications about our response to go out along with some urging of people to fill in the form. Now, that will mandate you and Keith to be doing this work pretty soon, because the deadline's the seventeenth.
We've already got something out on the meeting, haven't we not?
Yeah, we, we've put some, something out this week about meeting with lots of links and actually about eighty clicks through on those links to the consultation. So that's not good, but happy to do whatever you feel is best, but the meeting's obviously Monday.
That's why we did that in advance, because we didn't know what the council might decide tonight, we just felt the public should be aware, so we, we have been.
I think, I think to provide some extra colour to our comments, we need to tell the public that we as a coun-, that we as a council.
Yeah, also Tuesday or Wednesday, we'll have to get this bit down, get some words out, just to say to people, we've got, in effect, a week or so left, and this is, yeah, this is the council's view.
Okay, thank you very much. I need to approve the offer, this is item twelve, to approve the offer from Cornwall council, town centre, we want a consultation coming. So hopefully you've had a, had a look at the document and the offer. Anybody present anything more to say about this?
Well, okay, fine, I will, um, so it is a Cornwall council basically asking us to sort of note and like authorise this, as it were. Um, so they have already said that, you know, they're going to have the money, the town team are happy with the money as well, obviously. Uh, and so this is like formalising it all and putting the rubber stamp on. It's basically agreed to things such as the, like, a twelve month limit, though, where you need to have spent the money, so it doesn't necessarily mean that the money, that the project has to be over, my understanding, but you do need to expect it, that sort of thing. It's all the usual stuff that comes in our contracts effectively. Um, so this has got nothing really to do with, because I know accountability for the town team is obviously like part of our agenda. Um, I know that ensuring that we have the whole public voice as part of our team is on the agenda there, but that's not to do with this specific document or the decision that we need to make today, which is, as I say, effectively rubber stamping it.
You are, you are agreeing the, the.
The terms and conditions of it, yeah.
Well, the terms and conditions, but also in fact the project brief is in there.
Yeah.
In terms of, the, the offer is, this is a, Cornwall council are funding the consultation exercise to get a specialist in and to actually work through the possibilities and consult with the public. So that's what this project is and it'll be funded by a Cornwall council, but they need you to minute and approve agreement to this or they want to give us the money now.
Just as a point of clarification, um, the deliverables, as they're described by Cornwall council, have to be delivered within twelve months, so it's.
Yeah, no, it's fine, you don't have to spend it yet, complete it.
Well, I mean, I've got some questions. So outside of, outside of this document, which I think will have to be the side or not side, I want to know, how is the town council going to be involved when the consultation is being designed? How can we input into the selection process of a suitable qualified specialist? How can we input into the questions that are going to be asked? How can we input into how the questions are going to be asked? How can we input into who is going to be asked the questions? And, you know, u- understanding that we're not going to be able to change the words of this document, my personal feeling is that we need a guarantee from the town team that in all those questions, the town council is going to be involved. Because the way the document is written at the moment is that there are going to be specialists who are going to be recruited, there are going to be questions asked, there's going to be key stakeholders identified. And, uh, you know, all this number of things, none of those pieces of information has, to my recollection, actually come before this town council. And we haven't been asked, you know, what do we mean, what does that mean to us? So I think this is our last chance, I think if we, if we rubber stamp this document, this is our last chance to be involved in any of those questions. Because I think in effect what we'll do is give the town team the, um, the rubber stamp to go away and design this consultation however we want. That's, that's my view.
You can ask, because it mentions in here towns with functioning town teams, do you actually have a functioning town team?
They're, they're running, you.
Because I look at the website and I haven't seen anything about town teams on there.
I, I, I probably would defer as a candidate.
They're quite around my site. What, totally stuck fit to the Budenstrat website?
Yeah, I don't know if it's linked off or if we've actually thought that ourselves.
It's not our website, um, we were looking at it, in, to, to answer the question or address some of the points here, remembering the council has, well, two seats on the town team, one of which is currently filled and one you have on the agenda this evening to fill. So in one sense, that is the town's councils' eyes and ears and input to, to the process and it's for, and those councillors are to, you know, be aware and to put those views and to, to feed back and raise, raise a flag if there's a real problem or hopefully working, working consult, yeah, don't work, but, but hopefully, you know, working collaboratively with, with the rest of the, of the town team. Second part of the question is, the town team does need a bit of a reboot, in all honesty, it has, uh, in one sense, it's been waiting for some money, because most things actually are driven by some resource. So it's been waiting for money to do something. So hopefully, if this money, well, the basis of this money comes in, there's now ground to go back and recruit more into the town team to get that wider input and to make it more accurate.
Um, it's nice to hear that one of the reasons that I'm sitting in this room tonight is I was vehemently opposed to the Triangle project. And that caused me to sort of have a little bit of a go on social media and then somebody said, well, come and sit around the table if you think you're odd enough. I said, fair enough, fair enough. So, so me and the town team are not exactly who's and buddies, but I'm, well, I go with this. Um, the way I would get on it is this is money for the town, this is an opportunity to start really reaching out to the town, asking questions as to what they would like to do to revitalise the town's centre, what can we do? The, the, the top-down approach of, we've got this great idea for the triangle, obviously didn't work. This is an opportunity to go in with a bit more of a bottom-up approach. I don't think we actually lose anything, I don't think we kind of lose control of the process by accepting this money formally. Um, let's get the, the full complement of town councils, of town councillors on the town team. Hopefully, the town team will be revitalised by having a few quid in the bank and we can actually progress this quickly enough and we can do some, some good for the town. I, I, I don't see much of a downside in accepting this catch.
I'm to- totally okay for money for you. You know, it, it's good, um, because we are too often the forgotten end of the county. Um, but I'm just very concerned that from the people of BUDs' point of view, they've probably looked at the Budenstrat website and have seen nothing about the town team on there. And all of a sudden, this is going to hit them, are we going to be into the tri- triangle scenario all over again?
Yes.
Um, we did do a lot of comments originally about trying to recruit people to the town team, like, we did do a lot. Um, like, whether or not there's like an explicit link, like, I can quickly check now.
It is on the website.
Yeah, so like.
There's a town team tab on the website. Under future. Probably hasn't been updated for a while, but it is there.
Yeah, I understand.
Your future.
I think to give some reassurance, um, just to reiterate, the, the, uh, the, the offer on the table is around research and consultation, so it is not, and I would say if anything, yes, learning has occurred from previous, uh, iteration and proposal and that isn't what's on the table now, it's now about, okay, let's go right back to the grassroots and think about what things could like, getting the, getting appropriate specialists on board to help us to be through that.
So when I was helping to edit this document, there's a lot of the language that I did change, which was things like explicitly pointing out, it's not just high street retail, that it's anyone that uses the high street, that it's workers on the high street too, or high, like, workers that use that area. Like, it's the students that also go through the town, things like that, like, and, like, trying to really change that language, so it was, it was much more than just the business owners that happen to be surviving right now. Like, for example, the meeting that we had the other day, I was explicitly pointing out, how about startups? Like, why, like, we need to be talking to startups and engaging with them to see why they haven't managed to start up yet. Or we should be talking to, uh, owners, like, business owners or people that have had business before, that they've stopped for some reason, and talking about why they've stopped. Uh, because that, it, there's that famous diagram of this bomber, uh, like, it was Spitfires or something, of war and war, and it shows you, oh, like, there's loads of dots of where, all the bullet fire of where, when they've come back. I was like, oh, they, these are great, like, now we can see where to patch up, it's like, but there was this two vans behind the, the engines, which had no bullet holes, which meant that if you got shot there, that actually made you die. That's why you didn't come back. And actually, like, if we only satisfy those horrendous town right this very second, who are doing well for us right now, and they're the only ones on the team, that's something, thanks. So that's something I'm explicitly trying to work for, is ensuring that it is a bigger consultation than what was originally planned, ensuring that it is involving everybody, which is why it's talking about, you know, trying to explicitly point out who might be, like, uh, key stakeholders. Um, and also the, the sort of language around, it's, it's not just shops, right, there's so much more to a town than the shops.
I, I see all that and that's all wonderful, but I think the people of you, when you look at the website and they would expect to see something on the town team under your council, not in the future.
Yeah, it's actually under council, yeah.
It's under council, your town team, right there.
There's this app. It may not be on mobile, I don't know about mobiles.
Well, that is where most people are going to use social media, on their mobiles, and if they're not seeing it.
I don't know, I'll look at my mobile now, but that.
They, they will be under the impression that nothing's happening, they don't know anything about this. So, so to suddenly come out with this, we are not going to be back to almost triangle fiesta again. That's, that's what I feel. Yeah, sorry.
No, I have, we're well aware of this and we're well aware, we've been talking about how to get a united, properly cohesive response. So if we end up shifting things around on our website, we end up putting out press statements at the same time, we've also been working on the town team's website to make sure that the messaging is going to be right. And we will probably have to own the mistakes of last year in the tone, so I'm quite confident if we don't rush it, we take a little bit of time to think about getting it all right, all the boxes ticked, we'll be okay.
There's a comment about my way.
Yeah, I was just going to say, my understanding of the concept is, is we're going to ask the people of BUDs what do they want, not the businesses, the people. And then a plan will be. And then a plan will be formulated on what is fed back to them. So, you know, yes, we've been elected, but on, on stuff like this, a lot of us were elected on the idea of consultation on big decisions. This is a big decision. Let's just ask the people of Bude what they want, and then discuss the outcome.
I suppose my, my.
That, that to me, sorry, yeah.
My point is that I don't know from this document that the people of Bude are going to be asked. I don't know who's actually going to be asked. I, I look at the, I look at the good people around this table, and I know that you will say to me, "That is what's going to happen", but I don't necessarily see that written in black and white, because I don't know who the key stakeholders are. I don't know who they mean by the wider community.
Oh, I see.
Those, those words, those words don't say to me that there's going to be a survey that's going to go out to every single person in Bude, or there's going to be, um, focus groups where everybody's going to be invited, or there's going to be round-table discussions. I don't know what's going to happen. And that feels to me like, you know, like, we are saying to the town team, you know, within, within the auspices of this forty-eight thousand pounds, you decide. So, if you think the key stakeholders are the ten shops that sit around the triangle, that's who you'll ask. If you think the wider community is the Chamber of Commerce, that's who you'll ask. And we won't have any say in that. And, you know, I, I know that, I know that you'll say to me, "Not on my watch", that's not going to happen as far as I'm concerned. But, I think past experience of how, how the town team has operated has made me feel, I, I want more than, I want more than just people saying, "Oh, it, that", you know, that definitely won't happen.
Yeah, I, I think some of the devil is in, is in the way that they were constituted, in the sense that they were supposed to be a collection of more than just the town council. So, it was a business representation, the MP was on there, and those sorts of things. So, it is a little bit, a bit like the coastal community team, it's a bit one step removed from, from just the town council. But, but as Katie said, there, there is, there is two representatives from the town council on the team. Um, and, you know, it's very much, uh, on, beholden on that to ensure that the, the feelings and views of the, of the town council.
And it's facilitated by officers. So, again, we are, having had this discussion, I think everyone around the table is well aware of those concerns, and clearly, I would strongly, no, fully expect that should, should the, uh, just ten businesses be selected as the only people they're going to talk to, um, that wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, I, I think they got their pants pulled down badly enough last time.
This is colla-, this is about collaborative working. We're all on the same side here, as it were, and it's about how we engineer. But in one sense, either the town council that does it itself, and you around the table, design and work on that and work with consultants, and we don't have a town team at all, or we use the people in the town team to, to add to the equation. Again, going back to early days, the way the government likes, existing government, likes to do a business is to have that business representation, rather than just looking to the public sector. That's why town teams and such things have been created. But it, it's about working together, it's about influence and getting, making sure that the views of councillors are fed into and properly taken on board. And I'm sure your representatives will do that and will assist that.
I'm just, it might just be a little bit of a question, but so if the representatives go in and they're not happy with the way the consultation is being planned, and then they report back to us, what is the step? How is it not allowed?
Well, because these guys have to pay the council.
I know. Like, what is that process, so?
If it, I, I, well, I'd have to actually look back, but fundamentally, we, under this agreement, we are, the town council is the accountable body. It will receive the funds, it will be responsible for letting the contract.
So, basically, the representatives that go in have an important say, and they have to be listened to.
And if there's something you're seriously unhappy with, then it becomes back to the town council to have that discussion and.
In which case, it seems that we do have, uh, kind of an assurance.
You, you, as you own, sorry, you collectively as a town to own the, the contract, as it were, yes, you have the final say.
I mean, the other thing as well is that because it's us literally with the cash and holding the coppers, as it were, like, anything in terms of the actual, um, because this is going to begin after tender, I believe, but as soon as, it's like, trying to arrange some sort of document. Um, that ultimately, because it's still coming out as us, I'm guessing we're still going to have to approve that tender at some point, like. I know the idea is that we, like, try, you know, we don't want to hold up for it so much, but that's a legal, like, that is a legal document at some point. And so is the, the contract with the consultation firm, that's still going to come under us to write.
Well, I, yeah, I, and I would suggest, the, the, in effect, the project brief is what's in the offer letter.
Yeah.
That's the thing to be done. There will be bids come back, which will, from, hopefully, from consultancies to say, "This is how we would deliver it", and they will outline their proposal as to how they could do that. There's a decision point then. I would expect the town team in the first place to be assessing that and recommending that, and then we have to let the contract. I mean, I wouldn't want, I mean, it wouldn't make much sense to say, "The town council", as a whole council, I wouldn't suggest gets involved in every phase of that.
Not in every phase.
But you can, you know, we can circulate, we can certainly put forward the, the proposed kind of, "This is the solution they want to go with" before we let the contract. So, say, "This is what's happening, and if there's a problem at that point, we can address it."
Um, my problem way back when the Triangle scheme was on the table was that I saw this council as having a key gatekeeper role and ushering a scheme that Bude didn't want through that game. Now, differences of opinion still exist around whether my perception is right or not. We're not down, well, we've moved forward. We still have a key gatekeeper role, but it's not a gatekeeper for a, any specific scheme. It's, it's a gatekeeper for a set of consultation. Now, the fact that we don't have in absolute grander detail the people that they're going to consult with is, I, I personally find less of a worry than they've got a big scheme in their pocket, they want to try and push through. I, I don't see huge sort of demons in the corners by releasing the money for the consultation. Now, I, I do think that the two town council representatives on the town team, and the fact that we're ultimately writing checks, is a, a big enough guarantee so that we can usher this part of the process through the game.
Yeah, I was going to say, because you're very similar to that, and I would like to propose that we approve the proposal.
I mean, I, I want to say before that, that, um, I, I feel like I've been asking questions about the town team and about what's happening about this new, and, uh, what's happening about this consultation for months. I haven't seen anybody from the town team from here. I haven't seen this document until today, when I've been asked to effectively agree the project brief. I haven't heard from any of my town team representatives about what's been actually happening at town team meetings. My understanding is that constituted town team meetings haven't actually been happening. That, that the town team group itself hasn't got together, that this document has been produced by the chair, the vice chair, and a couple of other of the town team representatives without a constituted meeting. So, I suppose for me to feel more assured about this, I would like to see whenever something like this comes from the town team, that the chair of the town team comes to this meeting and gives us the assurances that we want, and that the representative of the town team tells us in advance what's actually happening, or certainly tells us in arrears what's happened at the meetings. Because otherwise, I mean, I think being a representative of this council on a body should surely mean that you are communicating back and forth, you know, reporting back and forth about what's actually happening at the meetings. And, and I suppose my worry is that that doesn't, you know, we seem to have been in a six-month hiatus. And, and now, and now we've got a fully finished document, which is kind of signed it, all the money's displayed. But that's, so that's all right. Katie?
Um, like, I, I don't agree that it's not been reported back up, because I do remember, um, like, things being raised such as, "Oh, now we're just waiting on Cornwall Council to get back to us", and, "Oh, now, like, they've got back to us, but now we need to get back to them to get the document." Like, we've had that announced, and literally what this is, is that document that's been passed from us, from Bude and Stratton Town Council, and written by our own officers as well, to Cornwall Council, because it's basically originally something that Cornwall Council wanted before they would formally give us the money. And then it's, it's basically just been going to and fro for ages, like, stuck in a bit of a weird limbo. Um, the, the other point as well was, the, like, as Bude and Stratton Town Council, like, the original vote on the Triangle was to do this consultation. This was what we were after. Nothing has actually changed, the whole point was to do a consultation. Like, I am strongly against, massively against the Triangle project, but very prone for the consultation. So, it has taken that long from that original discussion when that all stopped to now, for Cornwall Council to give us the money, and now, right this very second, is that's what this document is now, is notarising that and saying, "Yes, please, do give us the money", like, so for us to sort of turn it away now, it's like, wow, that was, that was many months, not being able to do much. Um, and, like, you're right, like, when they start actually doing meetings and, like, coming forward with stuff, like, this was, I mean, like, the first meeting since, I don't know how long, but, like, previously it was Amanda that was giving us updates, and she's obviously gone now, and this is the first time since Christmas this has, anything has happened. So, again, like, once you get another person on board as well, um, like, hopefully, you know, we'll have a bit more say in that. And as I said, my whole point with them was to diversify. Remember, like, me saying we should be talking more about less the shops, more about the other businesses too, et cetera. Um, and so I'm really ensured that fact that, I think, that, yeah, they are listening. And if there's anything else you feel like you need to add, I think we can still say, "Okay" to this, and then we can still write notes if you want to go back with, about trying to get some answers to some of these questions. And that's how we can move forward, is like, we notarise this. We might let those, if we want, like, explicitly, the town council wants to know these, then that's like a separate thing, and in the third thing here as well, who want, who else wants to help here to ensure that this gets done. Remember, we do also have people at the Broi, that's taking part. So, technically, there'll be like three, two and a half, three town councillors from Bude and Stratton Town Council. And that leaves just two people that are at the moment, that are massively engaged, but aren't on the town council. So, yeah, like, in terms of numbers of people who are on this town council, we're actually more than, yeah, we're free compared to two right now, so.
The second case proposal.
Oh, you're seconding the proposal, I think.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to say that, um, with this whole town team thing, for, for very eloquently summed up how I feel about it. And I find it disturbing that there's two of us on this council who feel that we know nothing about the town teams, really. And that disturbs me, that worries me. I know I'm still pointing my feet, and Keith tells me I can't use that excuse any longer. Um, but yeah, and if I feel like that and I'm on council, I think a lot of the people of Bude.
We all think the government drives, it's the biggest call-out, they know exactly what they're going to do with this town team. And they're just going to take run-up, they don't know, and not how they think. And that's just not my opinion, a lot of people think the same.
Well, we've, we've had a proposal, but I, I wanted, I wanted to maybe put a, a, a second proposal in which is around, as what Katie was saying. So, uh, so a proposal to ask the town team to take into account some of my worries about, you know, some questions about it. So, I suppose, if that's all right with you, we'll be taking it in two parts, say, the proposal, Kelly, seconded by Mike, that.
What you can do is if you want to add what you want to say as an amendment to the proposal.
I was going to say, I can just amend it.
If, if, if the proposer and the second are content with that, can then be done as one whole thing.
I, I mean, I, I suppose my, my amendment would be something like, uh, we want to have some, some PR answers to some of the questions around how the consultation has actually been designed, and, um, who's going to be asked, and, you know, the methods of being asked and that kind of thing. And we want to have some form reporting in the town council, um, from the town team, uh, going forward. Would that be?
I'm happy to include that.
Are you happy to include that?
Yeah, when you say formal reporting, do you mean outside of the three councillors that are on the town team?
Well, either the councillors coming in and then reporting all the town.
Effectively ask for a report from the camp, yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so, so we've got the proposal there that we, we accept the, we agree the forty-eight thousand pounds, and, but we ask for.
Agree the agreement.
Agree the agreement, yes.
Yes, you're, you're approving Cornwall Council's offer for funding.
But, uh, we're asking for, I suppose, more information.
More information on how the consultation takes place.
Okay, so, all those in favour? All those against? Abstained, sorry. Okay, thank you for that, sorry to be a taming. And thank you, Katie. Right, to approve the submission of lottery to fund Bude, so this is item thirteen, uh, National Lottery Community Fund, skate park, and National Lottery Community Fund, town trap memorial.
Sorry, talking a little bit about this. So, in, uh, the council's efforts to raise funding to enhance and enlarge skate park, one of the other routes that it can take is to apply to the National Lottery Community Fund. Uh, account for the skate park received, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand pounds from NCF towards their skate park, of which ten thousand pounds was for a youth worker. I hate to interrupt. Um, so, what I've done is, uh, has got down the road preparing that occasion to them to contribute towards our efforts to get the skate park enlarged and enhanced. One of the requirements of the application fund is that, um, the applicants board, which in this case is yourself, approves the person making the application, uh, effectively to avoid me doing that, whatever I want without your permission. Um, so, really, it's, it's a rather stunning, uh, sort of effect that I can make this application. My quay is for a smaller amount of money with the Tank Trap Memorial project to, um, to the All Hall programme, the grants up to ten thousand pounds. But again, that needs approval from the board, um, in order to make that case.
Well, if I take, does anybody, anything to say on this?
No, I'm straight for it.
Katie?
Um, does it affect, uh, I guess if we, if we won in a rumbow, um, does it affect, uh, chances or ability to apply for a project in the future?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions? So, that's proposed.
And seconded, yeah.
Seconded, yeah. Do, do you want to take them separately then, to the?
Um, no, it's just with regard to the Tank Trap memorial, um, this has been spotted on the agenda, and I was asked just to read this out. Um, it's from the Bude Royal British Legion RNA and RMA, and I don't think they totally under, this is my opinion, I don't think they totally understood that it's lottery funding. But this is just what they asked me, so I've been asked, so I will. Um, "During this time of cost-of-living crisis, with the armed forces veteran in Bude and Stratton area believing it's wrong to spend thousands of taxpayers' money to move these tank traps, maybe we can move, come back to this in years to come, and we're sure the money could be spent better in the local community for people that are struggling to get by." Do you want me to read out this to people?
Um, I don't know, is that something we want to keep on the minutes?
Uh, we don't, no, we don't need, I mean, if, how, how many people could just, but, uh.
One, two, three, sorry, it's not that many. But I, what I didn't realise was that, this is something you might be aware of, um, that years ago, the original intention was by Margaret Clark Frost to get her son to move tank traps, probably with a stinger or something, which we can't do nowadays because of health and safety and everything. But I was asked to read it out.
Okay.
Okay, so, the proposal on the table is for both of these?
Yeah, it's still having in proceed.
Yeah, okay, all right, so that's proposed and seconded. So, all those in favour of approving? All those against? Abstained? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, and thank you for reading that out to us. I mean, I actually can go back to them and. Okay, and thank you for reading that. I mean, I actually can go back to them.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I would quite like to be involved with the memorial garden out there. I have mentioned it before.
You did, oh.
Yeah, and I would like to be involved.
Okay, uh, item fourteen, to discuss the future letting of Pitch and Pup Hall. You sent us something a bit.
I sent you a very, there's a piece of paper, if anyone hasn't, if anyone knocked, of course.
No, I've not got it, no.
Right, well, if you want some. Apologies, I, I don't intend this to, to fully resolve this, fully, in terms of the whole issue around the building. I don't, at this point, um, it is clear in terms of, um, the intention of the council is to ask for expressions of interest. And just wanted to say that there is, one expression of interest has been made from the existing, uh, licensee of the building. Uh, but, and again, in terms of maybe the best forum, I did want to just think through kind of some implications because the building has things have developed over time. We have the building, there is the catering facility, as it were, which, um, the Pearl Exchange rules to, uh, the building as part of its operation. And then we have the operation of the Pitch and Pup course, and things are kind of a little bit interlinked. Currently, um, say, the Pearl Exchange leased the building, having the fact that we didn't have the building anymore, they then run the Pitch and Pup course from their, um, horse box catering facility. We met, so recently, with the Pearl Exchange people, they kind of, I think the, 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 um, horse box didn't work very well last year for them. It actually didn't work very well, I think, from the Pitch and Pup course either. And the takings on both were down significantly. Um, but going forward, really, I'm taking this as a steer of how we go about because I can either advertise the whole thing as it currently operates, which was kind of mashed together to make work for that particular applicant. Um, we can split the operations apart, say, here's a building, who wants a community building? And then say, how are we gonna do the other bit? Because the other bit really is running the Pitch and Pup course, which we only ever did at a loss, and looking at the wages which are going up and up and potential take. Um, I would not recommend the council taking boarding house, we don't, we haven't budgeted for it. And so the other kind of op is, do we split them to say, here's the building and here's a Pitch and Pup operation, which will give you some more commercial licence for someone to say that do some kind of food and offering and run the course. So that's where I am at the moment, just making sure that we've got it, we've got it going, even though they, well, it's really hard for them now. I just really want the council to understand what, what it means, because we, otherwise we have to unpick it at the end of the process.
We had a huge argument about them subletting last year and now they wanna give it back.
Sorry, Katie. Yeah, so I'm super happy to see that, like, I like to, to really open it out and explore, like, see who in the town is interested. Um, I think there's something probably still a little in between these two. So there's advertising the building, the catering, and people's is integrated offering, but then that's like a bit of a, like, asterix on that of, um, being entertained otherwise. Because I'm sure if something came along and it was gonna cost us fourteen thousand pounds, but it's feeding children for the entire year, plus also saving one's lives, then we might think otherwise. So, um, I think there's something there in, yeah, like, it, it's not like it has to be a thing as part of the contract, but if you can offer this, then you would be looked more favouried. Favorably.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this one?
The Pitch and Pup may not be a money spinner, but it's one of those oddities that a lot of people in the town do have a degree of affection for. And it's also, you know, if it's not the Pitch and Pup, then what is it gonna be? I mean, are we gonna commercialise it in some other way? Are we against it? Are we gonna sort of do some kind of rewilding way? I mean, that's potentially what, what could happen. I would be inclined to think of this building as a community building with the potential for the tenant to run the Pitch and Pup should they so choose. And if they decided not to, then perhaps it's something that, that maybe has, um, run its course. Um, alternatively, uh, would we insist on a, on a tenant running it? And that tenant, you know, perhaps, uh, being less financially viable or giving a, a smaller return to the council for the building because they actually are running the Pitch and Pup as a, as a kind of community venture. Um, to me, it's a sort of marginal thing. The nostalgia element, we'd like to keep the Pitch and Pup, but I don't think it should be a deal breaker to decide who goes in there, whether they run the Pitch and Pup.
Can I just advise, because I actually looked at, if, uh, councillors on the council when we did this, the, the, the suddenly downed consultation, and actually, I, I looked at these figures today, because I think I've got roughly in my mind, I didn't print them down. Um, thank you. Fifty seven percent is what I remember of people that wanted the Pitch and Pup, or to see the Pitch and Pup course continue. Nine percent said no, and about a third.
One thousand seven hundred people as well.
And about, about a third said, um, they were indifferent. So there was a fair support, as you say, for the Pitch and Pup to continue. At that point, the, the council did resolve to continue offering a Pitch and Pup facility. And that really, the premise here is, I, I've not suggested we do anything else with it. The idea was to try and make sure that it is operational, um, this, this summer and available to people, but in a way which is affordable and doesn't, so to say, doesn't take a dent into the budget.
I'm trying to think logically, uh, that the last choice of splitting the offering. I'm trying to think of a way to allow more groups to potentially come in, right? And I'm guessing that's one of the ways that more groups could come in. Like, if you did offer them separately, but said you could take both if you wanted to, that would seem to be more friendly, like, you know, again, favourably with us. Uh, but that would potentially also allow more groups to join, because, yeah, some of it, because as I said, they've been unable to sublet it, right? So it's like, how do we try and allow that to happen? Is there something from your opinion legally that's not stopping them, isn't there, or?
Um, the, the, in terms of the subletting part was, say, in terms of using the building.
Yeah.
And to be honest, it was something we, we tried to put in there to make it more accessible. Part of the argument last year was, concern was that we're having one group having total access to a building, use the building, and excluded other groups. So the, the allowing of the subletting was put in to try and, A, encourage them to make it more open and B, for other groups to get the benefit.
Yeah.
What's been explained to me is basically, the operation that they have, it is not a commercial operation. It's a relatively small charity run by mostly volunteers with a few paid staff. And they're really set up, again, it shows the complications of that. They're not set up to do bookings and openings and closings and cleanings and, and billing to actually get any ma, any money back in. So really, you know, the, what we're saying, they're not really interested in doing that. They'll, they'll be happy if the council were to book out bits.
But I'm getting that stopping then, that we could put into the explicit thing here about the fact that we have said that, you know, we, we expect that you should be able to sublet this to other community groups and that we would be looking, again, favourably on those who can support that sort of service.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, having, having had that conversation about they're not able to recharge, I haven't really got the bidding facilities to keep on second and all that. But I am told by, um, other, by councillors not here tonight, that they, they, the, um, the use action group had been offered use of the facility, it would appear free of charge by the current income. So they are looking at ways of opening up, but, um, not, not going to charge for it. Um, really, I say, I'm not after, it's not sort of your hard and fast, I really want after a steer here as to, and make you aware of kind of those, um, so, imbalances here, how this could play out.
Yeah, I'm going down to the Pitch and Pup side a bit. Who's actually responsible for grass cutting of that area? Is it the council or is it the?
Yeah, we do the cutting, yeah.
No, because, um, somebody commented to me about that grass wasn't cut enough for it to work properly as a pitch and putt. And I remember when the Pitch and Pup was originally installed, there was a lot of uproar about it because people were saying it was cutting into ground. And it's, um, yes, you get people playing Pitch and Pup, but I think in some ways just returning it back to downland might be better. Or a secure dog walking facility.
So. Okay, um, just a really basic question. Has anyone, like, approached the council to ask if that kind of option of concession to run food and drink and a pitch and putt option is available? Because that's the thing, like, where's this come from? It, it's not, is it just because they can't deliver it at the moment, the current tenants? Or is there a feeling from other conversations that had?
No, to, to be clear, the current tenants have indicated they, their willingness to continue that operation. And it didn't, it didn't work well for them or us last year, uh, but that's been acknowledged and, uh, kind of, like, their, their feeling is, they know, they will need to manage it better.
Right, okay.
Um, and pay more attention to how it operates. Because I don't actually think it's open enough.
Well, I was gonna mention that.
Yes, I mean, that was something we were feeling back at, so we had due time. So it, it didn't work well last year. Um, again, it was being run by a community group, you know, have a certain focus and that probably was not these, it was not, and it's not their focus of operation. There, there was, there were ideas about how the young people would be trained and learn to do business and things like that, and to say that worked in different degrees the last couple of years. Um, if, if we went on a more commercial operation, I, I imagine there would be commercial operators who would have a very different approach.
Yeah.
Um, and what they would sell would be different and, and they're, no, they'd be what? Maybe, maybe, but sometimes it's about volume. Um, I, I do know of one operator that would sell cheap and cheerful, um, maybe not the most nutritious of food, I wouldn't, but, but that's the market they would sell to, um, or seek to sell to. So there, there are, so there's.
So there's interested people in the community, is what I was trying to guess at?
Yeah, there's very different groups to speak of. And again, I didn't want to kind of land you in a two months' time with a kind of, here's a paid company or kind of, you know, lots of sleepwalking or something without having an understanding.
Thank you. Um, I feel strongly for the first one, to be honest, because I think you can still put into that about the, because primarily your thing is that it's a community building, okay? And it's about, we are advertising this is the building, it should be having these catering services, it should have this E and P, uh, Pitch and Pup. And if you can't deliver that, then, you know, we, we'll see who else comes along and then we'll deal with it. But if you go for the second one, you're basically saying fifty fifty, it's commercial and it's not commercial. And I think fundamentally, uh, like, pretty much everyone is like, no, this is, it's for the, you're the community, it's community lands, et cetera, et cetera. And therefore should still very much, the field should still feel community driven. So I, I think, yeah, I, I would prefer the first one because I think just the, the phrasing of it. And I'm sure we could probably, like, as you say, put in there about subletting and things like that. And the devil's in the detail there, as we know, but advertising it as a whole and that people know what it is, then we'll see who comes forward.
I think we're sort of arguing for something that doesn't exist. Um, we would love a community group to have the building, but we want the building to operate Pitch and Pup as if it were suited to commercial and maybe it sells some chalk ices and whatever as well to make a few quid. It seems to me they can't really be both, and that's what we've already established with the existing tenant, it can't really be both. It's either a community building that does, you know, good work, curbs within this building, is open for various groups. It, it is much as the bits of the parkhouse sometimes are. Or it is a little concession that does Pitch and Pup and, and sells whatever it sells to, to make a quid. And it, and it seems that bolting the two things together, whether we say that it's gonna be integrated or whether we somehow try and separate, the only way that it, that in my mind it could possibly work is if almost you had another little bit of the building, tack on at the end, the, the let's out the golf clubs and sell as junk food. Um, I, I, I'm struggling to see who is gonna be interested in, in either of, of these options, really.
So it's part of the current.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just on a technical level, if the Pearl Exchange stay in there and we sublet a bit, and the Pearl Exchange are in there doing their, their yoga thing, or, probably one better example would be the Young Mums Group. And people using the cafe in the Pitch and Pup wanna use the toilets. Who's given access? Who gets access? Will they give access? We know, you know, so is it, is it workable to have two competing ideologies in the same place? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, if it's a community building and we're giving that place out incredibly cheap, and I'm fine with that for something that's doing mental health for youngsters, if it becomes a commercial entity and we let it out at the same price, every single cafe within ten miles is going to light up worse than the town team because they would have the biggest competitive advantage going. So it, it, again, you know, Kevin, nail on the head, you know, it's on a technical level, how would it work? Can, can you turn around to people that are eating food and drinking and say, no, sorry, I love the toilet? No.
The, the, the toilets do work in a sense, well, because of where the entrance is.
Well, yeah.
Access to them, and that's what.
They've been hell with it in the past, haven't they? Let's be honest. Let's not beat around the bush yet.
I think, I think we've, I think we have got there in terms of the, the, the arrangements, um, in terms of, as long as the building is open.
Yes, well, this is, this is the next, next part of the problem. If the building's not open, how do people get to the toilet? And like I say, you know, and then the big decision for me is if it's a commercial enterprise, if we let it out, well, I'm not gonna say how much we're letting it out for, but if we let it out for that, lights are beat, rosies, crockets, everybody at the top of town is gonna. Are you doing to our business?
Uh, yeah, so we were talking about the consultation, like broadly, people don't want the downs commercialised. So to bring it back to what we've got in front of us and the options, I think the only one that actually makes sense in my mind that is aligned with what we know broadly and the community's views are on that piece of land. Um, and our kind of aspirations for that building to be a community asset are the one that encompasses all of it. And the Pitch and Pup and the concession is like the nice to have part, but the real important core of that is take, strip out whoever the tenants are, like, going forward, going forward into the future. We want that to look like a community asset where that concession could be used to draw in, you know, people from the community that may not necessarily engage with X community group or Y community group or whoever it is, and have some involvement with that. And I think for me, that's the crux of it. It may not have worked with the sitting tenants last year, but the whole point is, how do we get, how do we move this forward and, and make that work? Because I think it can, I think it's just a case of, like, tweaking certain things and that. And that one feels like the best option for me.
My apologies, in terms of just for clarification, um, I'm just looking at the words here, it's, it's running things together too, too late. But it is, you know, for community use, advertised for community use. That's, that's, no, I'm, I'm very clear on that's what the council resolved, that that's what the building is for. So there's no suggestion that that building would be lent for anything other than community use, not a commercial enterprise. So I was all really, I was thinking, why, why, who's saying what you've said? And I think, no, it's maybe not made clear with advertising.
Well, you wouldn't need to do, if you rented me that horse box outside and said, I'll operate the Pitch and Pup. I, I, I know how to run a business. Anybody that's got a reasonable idea of how to run a sensible business could commercialise the shit out of that, like, reaching with arms. The problem, the Pearl Exchange, bless them, are lovely people. The problem, the power exchange, bless them, are lovely people, but they are not business people. And that has been the issue in year one and year two. This is why they struggle for money, this is why they struggle with everything. And we were told last time, yeah, we're going to get extra help in. I don't know who they hired. But dare I suggest, it might not have been the right person. You know, and I mean that in the nicest possible way. I, I totally agree with Sharon, it's a community building and, and you want them to succeed. But part of the reason I said in this meeting we had last year, let us control the subletting. I didn't want to be rude, but it's because I knew they didn't have a bloody clue how to do it.
Subletting was only for the room.
Well, yeah, but, you know, they've openly admitted now, you know, we don't have the ability to take money. Perhaps you should have known that last year.
Um, so, uh, going back to the, the public consultation, more people said they wanted it, it to be the main purpose as a community building than they said being a pitch and putt course on the site. So I'm guessing by that means if we lose the pitch and putt because of this first one for some reason or another, like this first choice, I think most people usually would agree with that based on the consultation numbers. So I actually want to propose now that with the tweak of for community use. So that would be, um, of course, that we advertise a building for community use, catering and pitch and pit call, uh, pitch and putt course as an integrated offering and not with subletting.
Think we do have to say anything before we.
No, that sounds fair enough. My comment is, is it's a community building. Um, bear in mind the croquet club have to use toilets there. Um, and there's been issues with it being locked. Can we, they've got a key, yeah? But there's no, we, we can't stipulate, has every member got a key?
Not every member, no.
Um, if I could just see, I don't know.
There are, there are, there are public works, we don't look far away as well, but we have made provision within the arrangement. And again, I'm dug out the whole of the.
Yeah, no, just sort of say.
But there are provisions for both, uh, because it's, again, it's, it's that whole, if you remember, and I've only alluded to it very briefly, kind of the, the history of how the building kind of got redeveloped into what it is. Um, but we've always been clear that whoever tenants the building as the main tenant, as it were, that there are other site users, both for the pitch and putt course, for the croquet club and for the other commercial activity that we would expect or require access.
Yeah, no, I just wondered, you know, writing into it, that it must be open, like, say between town and borough or something. That'd be my own, don't know.
There are, there are provisions in the existing arrangement which I would expect to continue, that whoever's running the building does allow access for the other site users.
Okay, so we've got a proposal on the table.
I'll send that please.
So the proposal is to advertise the building as a community asset, catering, a pitch and putt course as an integrated offering and.
With the sublet to other community groups.
Okay, so all those in favour? Against? Um, I'm standing. Thank you. Right, so it will be the final design for Welcome to View sign and approval this commission. So hopefully you've all seen the three offerings.
Uh, I've got a few questions. Firstly, I've seen one quote. That's been, it came out of the papers.
Yes.
Um, secondly, where did the design come from? Unless there's been, it's been an oversight and I've missed the meetings. This is sort of just derived. Um, and thirdly, why haven't we considered hand, hand sign writer on wood? Because aluminium is a really outstanding, whereas it's ultimately recyclable, but the finish for me doesn't suit. Um, yeah.
Okay, does anybody want to answer those questions or?
Well, we've worked with a local-ish, not in view, but a local company, um, that do design and signs, so this is work we've helped. We have to work with people to come up with something. Um, again, I would expect councillors to sit on the table and try and design something themselves. So these are options. Um, so, secondly, we can then, how we want the finish, we can, we can take separately. We, I mean, I mean, we would like a new sign this year, say, given the, the climate is.
So, um.
But, no, you've got two questions. One is, what do you want it to look like?
Okay, not that.
Um, in terms of the visuals, so number one, I do prefer the, like, number one's dark background because that lends itself to being a bit easier, the, the texture pop a bit easier, but also because of the aging, like you don't want a light colour background when it's in a very, like, red river for an area, it's gonna, if you have it mostly white, it's gonna look really rubbish, really soon, really quick, really dirty. Um, in terms of though, the flag on the right and the crest on the left, like, I really dislike the difference. Like, um, I would prefer to have the crest from, uh, the third one. Um, so the light blue one, so with the chuff on top to, because that's so nicely balanced, like.
So, so.
Yes.
So the wood, which would.
So like you'll have like the town council crest on the left there and then the chuff with the, the Cornish shield, uh, on the right. Um, so, uh, that, that's the combination I prefer to go to. Um, I'm not sure though how much, uh, again, in terms of pop, like, if you have that more dark background, how much of that, uh, like the chuff and the shield will pop out? Like, you know, like, you get some of that, you can probably do some of it with, um, the, the political stroke, um, or the embossing, the white bossing the ground. Um, basically, there'd be something you can do there, um.
So how are we gonna, how are we gonna, are we gonna literally sit here and say, please let's not? You know, it was, we wanted to, we wanted, we wanted to see it on the left, we want the chat on the right. How, how are we, how are we gonna do this? I suppose it's a question that you probably should ask me, but I don't know. I mean, thinking about this earlier, I was, I was thinking that maybe we could, maybe we could take a sort of indicative vote in terms of the colour. Uh, I wasn't anticipating that, that somebody here would say, I don't like any of it. And I, I would have given it chucked out, but perhaps, perhaps we could, I don't know.
I, I'd quite like to discuss design and finish because I think both of them are terrible. Quite frankly, and I think, you know, even if we recreated what we've got now, it would be an improvement and actually employ a local handwritten sign writer. Um, so that's the issue I have with it because I don't think it's very good.
Kevin, what's, you've had your answer, sorry.
Uh, all I was saying is we, we need to be careful because hateful or lovely that they might be, these are somebody's intellectual property. So what we can't do is say, we like this, but we'd like somebody else to go and make one out of wood for us. Because that would be, you know, that would be inappropriate. So if we want a discussion as to whether we want wooden sign, fine. If we want a discussion as to whether we want these signs or elements of them, fine. But we can't go and mix and match it too much because these will be somebody's intellectual property, albeit we might not think much of them.
Um, I do think that given that it's the Cornish flag and the, and the view, I reckon it's going to differ hugely, particularly what's there, it's not like it's, you know, a big design difference. Um, I hate to say it, but I agree with you, I don't think.
Don't hate to agree with you.
I just, I, I just feel like I'm just spitting this out in the works of everything, but I don't think very much either.
Just the same, really, they did bricks slightly, didn't take my pickle anyway.
That is important.
It's the beginning.
Yeah, it's like, it's a very important spot and it's just, I probably wouldn't even notice, like, over.
Vicky, did you ever hear that?
Yeah, I've heard Martin's idea.
The wooden and the.
So we'll replicate what we've got already.
My idea, I think, would be to put it out to more designers rather than replicate. I, I, the point was, I would rather we had, if we had that or this, I'd rather that. But actually, I think we should put it out to, to more people to give us a chance to have something beautiful.
I was, who owns the building that is managed by?
Mrs Reynolds.
What?
Mrs, Mrs Reynolds.
Yeah. Which should be open to the idea of a lovely, great new home.
That would.
Um, so I think I actually really agree about getting, um, more designers. And I think as well, where you normally show your concept art, it's normally a very different range, like very incredibly different designs. You pick one and then you start to narrow it over the design a bit. So I would, I, I, so yeah, for the, for this explicit company, like, I would, there is a fleet that I'll be making to get this, the one, the one designer done, put that in the back pocket and then opening it up to other designers, basically. It's like, we've seen one, actually, we should be looking out for a few more.
So whatever, whatever the brief was, it gave to Gemma Signs, maybe something similar, but opened out to other sign writers. Um, I, I think I'll just take one more and then I, I think what I'll propose is that maybe a couple of people who feel really strongly about this work with Keith to, uh, you know, just, just sort this out. Go on, Kevin.
All I was going to say was the sign as it exists now, it's off, it's a, used to be, I don't know if it still is, but it used to be like layers of wallpaper, you could take it off and you could see the sign behind it and behind that. And going back, there have been massively different signs. Um, we haven't followed a template of it. I remember one with seagulls on it. Another one with the slogan, the loveliest piece of Cornwall felt as in pitch and. There were, there were multiple designs. So, uh, so, you know, we don't have to follow a template of what happens to be there now.
Okay, so can I propose that then, that, so a couple of people put up their hands and say that they'll have a short meeting with Keith while they're talking about the evolution. I volunteer us.
I second it.
Okay, so. Anybody else want to be involved? Yeah, Katie, sorry, Katie.
Yes.
My girl. Luke, okay, so you've got four volunteers then, is that, is that okay? So, so the proposal is that, um, Martin, Vicky, Luke and Katie work with Keith to work up a, I suppose, a design group and go out for some more options.
Do we have to do this with Stratton as well?
Yes, please.
Game by you.
Lovely, it's a little piece of.
Let's talk about Stratton.
Yeah, I'll stand in that one.
Okay, so that's the proposal, then, we.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all in favour? Thank you. Excellent, well done. Thank you for the designs anyway. I think they've brought a interesting, um, you know, you can't, it's hard to work with like these papers, isn't it? You've got to start somewhere. Right, okay, to establish a tree champions network. So this is me. Um, I, hopefully you've seen the, the papers I've put in. Um, the, the proposal is that, um, we go out to adverts, we get volunteers to, uh, come in to, I suppose, be a kind of arm of the planning committee in helping us.
Liam.
A Liam, exactly, of the planning committee, in helping us to, uh, monitor planning applications, which have got tree, um, aspects in it. And people who are the planning committee know that a lot of planning applications come through where either, um, trees are being, um, removed or where trees are supposed to be protected and the developers have a, had a duty to do that. Um, and it's quite difficult for Cornwall council enforcement, you know, given the, the constraints of, um, budgets and all the rest of it, to actually keep on top of these planning applications. It's difficult for us as a planning committee to keep on top of, um, what the requirements are for those developments, for the trees that are under care. Um, so that's the, that's the kind of, the main gist of it, that we, we get a sort of network of tree champions. I mean, I'm thinking ideally we have one person who kind of helps us coordinate it and then people in different areas where, um, once there's a planning application at the planning committee with tree aspects in it, then it's kind of given to a tree champion and they monitor that the conditions of the planning application are, are adhered to. And also with things, you know, um, you know, they bring to our attention things like, there's a piece of land in Stratton where there's thirteen houses, there's a planning commission for thirteen houses. And sitting alongside that is a proposal to remove all the hedge and all the trees that sit along the A three seven two. Um, so bringing those, you know, bringing those things to the planning committee and alerting us to areas where we mainly put tree preservation in, in good time, to try and stop developers kind of grubbing out trees unnecessarily. I think, um, I mean, this was an idea that Falmouth Town Council sets up a mission. One of the councils there was a tree officer from Cornwall council, and he retired, he became a town councillor. So he could see how the tree, you know, the situation was in Cornwall council. He could see the gaps in terms of the tree officers and what they were doing. Um, and, um, his view was that if the tree champions network is run under the offices of the town council, gives the tree champions a degree of kind of gravitas, as it were. I mean, we're not going to be asking people to go in and stand in front of trees, you know, a law not path or anything like that. We're asking people to do a kind of monitoring job, we're not asking people to put themselves in harm's way or, or, or become enforcement officers themselves. But by the very nature of the fact that it is endorsed by the town council and kind of going through the town council, it gives, it would give the tree champions more gravitas than just you and I going there and going, oh, I think you're almost going to be cutting that tree down, you know, I think you've got a plan application, it says you can. You know, people can actually go with a badge, saying that they're a tree champion volunteer for the town council and see what's happening. I don't think it's going to be very expensive to run, I've put in a budget of two hundred and fifty pounds a year, but mainly that's because the training for tree wardens and tree champions often takes place in, um, Truro. So, so that's where the Forest of Cornwall operates from. And that's where they do a lot of their training, uh, on, you know, various tree things. The chap from Falmouth Town Council has said that he's happy to do a training course for us if we do get these volunteers in place. Um, perhaps a meeting part, like meeting bombing or something like that. So, so, so that's the proposal. Sharon?
Yeah, I think this is great, like, completely behind this. I think it's fantastic and hearing the guy, what's his name, Alan?
Alan.
Alan speaking at the environmental and climate change forum meeting. A walk back was like really inspiring, that an army of volunteers, not an army, but a collective body of volunteers is actually your kind of strongest ally because they know the community, they walk the lanes, they see the building sites, they're, they are interested, it is about our community and it's essentially about how do we preserve what we love and what essentially preserves us in turn. Um, and it feeds into planning really nicely because there's a lot, there's a lot of things that we just can't keep on top of. And this is one part that I think passionate people that are interested in the environment and, you know, and trees, um, I believe will get behind. So I think it's great and, yeah, fully, fully support it. It's a great idea, thanks for bringing it forward.
Um, just interestingly, um, I am, I'm in support of this. Uh, there was a report came out just before Christmas, um, which stated that mature trees are, um, or the, the, the research discovered that mature trees are twice as good at capturing carbon as they previously thought. Um, which make, which means that mature trees are, um, irreplaceable. Um, and I think the report said irreplaceable and invaluable. So actually, it's not good enough to take out a mature tree and say, oh, we planted fifty, because actually they don't do the same thing. Um, and I think we all can realise that, but it's just that, you know. Um, and I think we all can realise that, but it's just that, you know, they're better, they're more valuable than we thought, but that way. So this is important.
I think it's an excellent idea and I recommend the same report. And I think, I think it's, it's not just that developers take down trees. Um, they also undermine them and destroy them in ways that they're not supposed to. You know, they, they have to put protection up against certain trees. And, um, you know, we've seen it, we've seen examples recently where the protection would just have been, um, ignored in effect and then stands of trees come down. Um, and there's nothing you can do about it, you know, it seems that it's too late. Okay.
Well, I propose that we accept this proposal and vote.
Okay.
Same there.
Okay, well, those in favour? Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, to ratify the submission to the community member, Hi-Vo is to.
Yeah, um, so yeah, it's incredibly frustrating after doing those two lovely big reports. Um, obviously we'll find a way through, like, the other opportunities or lack of, that they have to follow those too, because now we know what our biggest priorities are in the town. Um, otherwise, this was one that came up explicitly because, um, we've had a lot of people, uh, reporting that there's people speeding down the, over the downs. Um, but actually, what, after discussing it, it seems like, and looking at speed by the data, it doesn't look like there's actually people speeding. It's the fact we don't have a path and the fact that cars are going fast down there with no lighting. And that route is actually like a major route as you see on the map for like most of Flexbury, the, the camping side opposite and stuff. So that's why we've, we're looking at now at forming a path and that's part of the reason why, you know, it's, it's looking at, um, like basically just asking them to come up with solutions. So this isn't saying, you know, this isn't telling them what the solution is, it's just highlighting the problem for them. So, yeah, that's where we're at and this, that's what's happened, so.
I put it on the agenda because council previously had made a resolution on supporting the other two schemes, which we subsequently told couldn't go ahead. So, uh, Council of Good and, uh, Lebroyne got, no, put this forward, as it were, but we've had to put it into the system. So really, it's just council to fully, you know, just to.
The other thing as well, this was explicitly picked out by, um, the community network manager and the Hi-Vo's responsible person that turned down our stuff in the first place. So I'm hoping that means that they're already happy with it going forward.
Okay, so when we say to ratify this, um, do you want us to take the vote on it or just to?
Yeah, please, just.
Okay. Has anybody got any thoughts about this?
I'm just, I'm just going to reiterate that it is very disappointing that what we have here is if I were in a forum, I would use a different term, but a tiny little scheme, um, as opposed to anything that's really going to make any sort of difference. Um, it, you know, if they're offering this and it looks like we're going to get it, then we should, we should take it. But it seems like, once again, we are being overlooked, whereas other communities are getting far bigger and brighter and more impactful schemes.
So do we want to, do we want to express our disappointment, does somebody about it? Um, you, do you want, you know, along with ratifying this, do we want to express that disappointment?
I guess that the person, I, I mean, ultimately disappointment would be going, I guess, best to the Cornwall councillor because at the end of the day, it's the budget that, that Hi-Vo scheme is given and limitations on that. So I guess that's the Cornwall councillors to argue. So it'd be, I mean, we could do it to all three Cornwall councillors in that area to ensure that the wider view does get looked at. So, yeah, disappointment. Um, so yeah, I, I would propose that we ratify this and that we, we send like a letter explaining our disappointment and that we hope that our, to our Cornwall councillors, and hope that our Cornwall councillors can try and help us with the solution, should finding how we can get those two projects moving.
Okay, so that's the proposal.
I'll second that.
Yep, okay. I think that's one, okay, all those in favour?
Sorry, I'm going to stay because I didn't hear the rest.
Again, Adam, last one.
Only because I didn't hear it, but I thought.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Thank you for all the work on that, Katie. So, that's really appreciated. So, I was making the community issues to the councillors. Martin.
Um, I have some nice news, um, which is, uh, possibly as a result of the Surf Forum that we held a year and a bit ago. Um, I was phoned, had a call this morning with, um, the members of a new charity in Bury called Adaptive Surf. Um, and they've set up Ad Surf, which is a charity which will be looking at, um, taking people with mental health issues, with learning difficulties, um, with physical disabilities surfing as a sort of therapy. It's very proven by the WAVE project, um, and they're looking at, I mean, the ultimate aim, I guess, is, as we talked about in the Surf Forum, becoming a, a, a kind of centre of excellence for, for adaptive surfing, um, which is actually really, really exciting. Um, so I just wanted to say that this is happening, that I think as a town councillor, we should support it if we can, when they ask us. They haven't asked for anything, um, other than the detail, which is the people to ask about assigning leases, which I'll talk to you tomorrow about, Keith. Um, and, and also, um, you know, to, to let Make Up know and, and also perhaps Blatchminster via whoever overhears it, um, that this is happening and I think it's really great and it's the kind of thing that we hoped would happen, I think. So, good on them, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on that. I have a chat with some people.
Yeah.
And had a brief discussion vis-à-vis grants and unfortunately they obviously missed the window we've just had. So potentially that might come to us in the future, but it's, yeah, it's basically a civilian concept of the surf veterans and I will be doing lifeguard cover for it and often set up, so.
Yeah, it's really.
You'll probably be coming along as well. Probably will be, yeah. Yeah, so, um, while I've got the floor, I've just a quick one on other sports. In our great search for land in Bury and Stratton has now taken another leap. Somebody has approached us about reinstating, rebuilding, restarting Stratton Football Club. I would like a pitch site area of land. So, my constant juggle for land.
Not that one.
Another acre, but I might come to you one day and go, ooh, look, you know, gift, yeah. I mean, it's a nice idea, it, it is.
Um, from the housing perspective, Keith and I have a very interesting meeting this afternoon with Ian Mason, um, regarding the community land trust. Um, they're very much in their embryo stage at the moment. Um, the vision is absolutely fantastic. I believe he's going to be coming to the.
He's asked for a slot at the Metcalfs, we're wanting to explain their plans.
Yeah, and I think his explanation would be much better than anything I explained today. But it's very much going to be grassroots, but the vision itself is fantastic.
Well, I have done a great deal in my role as lead councillor for policing and antisocial, whatever it is. But I did notice that our brand new shiny, uh, police chief constable has issued an invitation to, uh, town councils, parish councils, et cetera, that he will come and chat with them. So I thought, fair enough. So I filed off an email to the wrong place and then eventually, eventually I got it to the right place. So there has been an invitation to the chief constable to come and address our august body. I have yet to receive anything but a holding email, but I'll keep you posted.
Any other new councillor?
Yeah, uh, so I've got two pieces of feedback from my two councillors, the Aiden roles. First one, Be Pride, second one, Be Climate Partnership. Um, so met with Pride two weeks ago and it was a really productive meeting. Um, but one thing that came out of it was, um, a strong feeling that they wanted to share their disappointment. This is like me kind of feeding back with the council for the way in which they believe Beast Stratton Town Council has compromised with prejudice and now formally underwritten the lowering of the Pride flag on specific days into our flag protocol. They also wanted to reiterate to councillors that Be Pride as an organisation would never ask for a flag to be lowered. Not only is it inherently disrespectful, but it is also antithetical to the concept of inclusion. So obviously that's all part of an ongoing conversation that we're having about flags. And I think what's really important to remember is that with any kind of relationship like this in a liaison role, there's got to be an element of constructive criticism and then obviously a period of reflection about that because obviously we make decisions and they have impacts and there are reactions, responses. And this is their kind of response in this instance. So my question, which is an open question, it's not necessarily to be answered now, but to, from them to take away is, how do we do better in the future? Other flag related information for flag fans. Um, the council is currently seeking planning consent to fly the intersex inclusive progress Pride flag from the castle flagpole during Pride month, June, and also the weekend of Be Pride, which is being held at the castle, in the castle grounds. And for all Be Fact fans, um, this action is in line with a resolution made on the 15th of December at Oversight Committee, um, where we resolved that Be Stratton Town Council apply for planning permission to fly the Pride progress flag during the 2023 Pride month. Um, that's flags, we've stopped talking about flags now. Um, so moving on to the other part of my report about Be Climate Partnership meeting, also attended by Ethan, which is great actually to have another councillor there. Um, so main points of feedback, um, Be Friends the Earth and the Be, are in Network Panel, were voted in to become members of the partnership, which is great. They were waiting for like a collective meeting that they could have that discussion, which is why they've joined now in, in lots of other things. Um, and the Be Climate Partnership CIC directors were also appointed by formal vote in that meeting. Um, the partners also voted to expand the partnership meetings, to include invites to, and representations from appropriate and relevant organisations and experts going forward when needed in the delivery phase. Um, and as far as I'm aware, although I don't have the detail, it was fed back that the town council has received the first tranche, is that the right word?
Yeah.
Of lottery funding and this is now formally passing out, being passed out, being dished out to key delivery partners. For example, Be Dari Torres Board, sorry, I will be quick, this is going on there. Um, so key priorities for them at the moment, obviously because they're spinning the wheels trying to start this whole thing with the amazing grant funding, um, is to essentially recruitment, that's the main thing, is to get people in roles so that they can start projects, um, meeting with key suppliers and stakeholders to kick off everything. Um, because most projects can't start without people in the jobs. Um, so there was also reinstatement of key suppliers, um, and that was voted on to enable the various, well, six projects to move forwards towards delivery. Um, and yeah, if you have any more questions, there is a bit of an update to the website, which is good. And apparently in the works are some more kind of frequently asked questions type style comms to go out and make things a bit clearer because obviously we in the council have seen the full bid document, which is full of technical jargon, but trying to make the messaging clearer was very much part of the conversation in that meeting as well about how things are presented and communicated out to the general public because that's really important. So, yeah, if there's any questions, I'll try and answer them, but I need to.
Go on, make it a call.
Yeah, um, so I've actually had a member of a community company, um, like specifically, like, had an interest in, um, like basically an idea that I had.
Yeah.
And, um, around the, the, um, like basically environmental idea that I, I thought was actually genius, like, but it's not something they could lead themselves, the entire, things like that. So I'm wondering, um, in terms of connecting them with the right sort of time, because obviously, as you say, like the, um, the team's very busy right now. Like, have you got like someone specific I can sort of poke them to or like? I was putting in one person trying to recruit multiple people at the moment.
Yeah.
So.
I guess like just what, like, when do you think they'll have the sort of ability to look up again, as it were, and sort of see what else could be out there and then?
I guess when people are in post, but most of the, um, most of the recruitment, um, advert things end like by the mid February, early March, from my reading of them online.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess we will be, people will be in post like early March time and things will start happening. But at the moment it's just a scrabble to get people in post, well, not a scrabble, obviously.
I guess I just don't want them going to get lost and then to be disillusioned.
Okay.
So knowing the rough times scales means I can sort of poke them at the right time and go, okay, now they're ready to, to listen to you, basically.
And there will be someone to actually receive the information because.
Even that, well, they can talk to you, don't they?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine, I can talk to them and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other requests or any other questions or requests? Thanks all so much. So nineteen, to open tenders for them, good a favour, the idea of Site Committee authority to assess bids and all the contracts. Okay.
Right, tender, I'm afraid, at this point, yes. Um, but really, just catch the procedure is that tenders are opened. Physically open, I'm afraid, yes, um, by, by committee or council. So hence, I, I, I am suggesting we change, I am suggesting we change this, but in your presence. Now, this isn't safe, really, it's not for discussion, all we, and I won't even tell you whose tender.
Just have to open the envelope.
By opening the envelope, I will tell you the facts quickly, hopefully this is readable in a, in a very.
I thought it said price, five B on the back, I thought, oh no.
Really quick.
Have they given me an easy price? If you remember, the second part of the, uh, the agenda, right, is to, uh, really, we can now take this away, digest it and put it back to Oversight Committee.
Is that in the book we said?
That looks like what we said.
There should be a price.
You think it was just like one piece of paper?
Yes.
The most obvious thing.
This is, obviously this is from a, a time in the past when there was under the table dealings and. So this actually has to be, and we do all see that this was an article.
It's not really a panic agenda, I have notes.
Well, you can, you can witness there's nothing else in this, I'm afraid.
It's giving like a magic咒. I guess that just means they're happy with the price.
Well, I would, if, if there was something straightforward, and this is, remember, this is a two-stage process, so then.
Have you told us the price yet?
Well, we told them the price.
I mean, they've, they've given us their approach.
We did say that if they wanted to give the price for the design bit and then separately give the rest of the bill.
That's what I'm looking to see, but actually, to be perfectly honest, because we have a full tender that they've actually put in a. I will.
The USB.
We will, we will have to just distribute this to the committee for digestion, because I'm not sure if it actually give you a straight to the competitioners.
You can see this is untouched by human hand.
Yeah, exactly. This is part of the problem of why I don't like doing it like this because I'm now sat here trying to make sense of a webpage document.
Oh, it's a six pound, six pound fifty.
Nothing is jumping out at me. Do you have any other submission? We will copy this and circulate it to. No, this is their case study.
I mean, that's okay, because that's actually their case study will, because we told them for part of case study around the budget and the process of effort. So yes.
We have found it. Hey, not there in the end, not the most obvious place. Stage one, um, design of one thousand three hundred and fifty. Stage two, yeah, they spent the money. Ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty. So if you just have ninety-eight thousand.
So the hardware, so a hundred thousand in total.
Shocking twos.
I can't believe it, man, the rush is.
And really, I think the committee can assess that, she'd be vote to approve that. So the committee can assess.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna propose that we do it.
Okay, so we donate to the oversight committee authority to assess this and all the contracts. All those in favour? Thank you. Well, okay, that's very smooth.
That's so stressful, horrible things happening there.
Okay, um, item twenty to fill the form based is oversight committee, two people. Filing committee, one, one hundred percent to be detailed. Um, I wanted to make a plea for the oversight committee, just to say what a fantastic committee it is.
You'll get to look at the.
You're getting lovely tenders. So, so primarily the oversight committee is about the administration matters of the council. So, um, internal kind of matters. But we do review the resolutions that have been passed uh, to check on their progress and, and expedite them if we can. Um, we've got a small portfolio of projects that we're managing. Uh, we hear updates from the council forums, we hear updates from all the officers, uh, which is very interesting. And we discuss policies of these entities. So that's kind of where the oversight is.
It's really fun.
We're organizing rooms.
So shall I take one at a time?
Yep, it does.
Any willing volunteers for the oversight committee?
It's lovely.
Planning season.
I did not prepare a pitch. Um, it's just a fun time where we talk about fans every two weeks.
We're running.
Excuse me, it's really fun. It's actually really good. Um, yeah, come and join, have some fun with the planning committee. It would be great if we could have more numbers, because actually recently there's been a few times where we've been fairly core, which is obviously an issue, because if we're not core, we can't make our kind of comment on behalf of the town council. So it's kind of important if you care about where buildings and people's homes are going to be built in your community. So yeah, it's kind of vital, but yeah.
We can use.
Would be really useful to have.
We do sweat, it's a little bit of time.
Why is it?
Um, it's every other Wednesday at three P M. So it's a really annoying time.
You were on it for a year.
School pickup.
You were on it for a year.
I'm always working on Wednesday.
Yeah.
I'm already on it.
Yeah, who knows yet, they're already on it. Ethan, do you want to try? No? It's fine. It's okay.
Okay, moving swiftly on then, uh, one representative on the town team, now we know how vital this is. Katie, do you want to give us a pitch for the town team or is it?
It's really fun.
Have we said everything we need to say?
Um, yeah, like you can see how critical important it is. Um, and I think what we need is some, someone that is willing to really be good cop back off effectively. Um, and really sort of be that strong voice and obviously like quite stubborn and definitely can, you know, say what exactly how I feel. But you also need someone that can actually be like, you know, a team worker in that. And like, especially when it comes to volunteers from the community. And when we start to get these businesses and like workers involved, like we need to be able to listen to that community group and like, you know, treat them and respect the fact that they are volunteering. So, yeah, it'll be a good time for the person, please.
And do we know yet when it is or?
There's no formal meetings, like times, basically. Um, it's all quite ad hoc at the moment and probably will be for probably at least left for the fourth or fifth report, because we're still, don't want to build up the team again. But as I said to them, you also don't want to until you've got a hundred percent guarantee rubber stamp everything. Because you don't want to start getting people's times and hopes up for them to realise what's happening. And they've already done that for a round before and another round previously to that. So now I know something's happening. I want to say that's where you want to start to build up your team. Like, so, yeah.
Tend to be early evenings and they can be online.
They're all online, yeah. But I may need to come on it online with trouble running around in the background as well, yeah.
Okay, anybody after that?
My boss is on it, so I really appreciate it.
I mean, you say that, but the only people that have been on it have not, yeah.
Yeah, he's still my boss, though. Slight pump, basically, interest, I think. Yeah. Free TV over in everyone, maybe.
I have the same old problem. I work in the evenings. Um, every other evening apart from tonight, I'm domiciliary care worker. So unfortunately, I can do daytimes, I can do Thursdays, but evenings are come out.
Right, so.
Philip, you don't want to do it?
But on the town team?
Yeah, you, you.
That's my, that's my issue with it, really.
You do have a very critical eye and you speak up a strong voice that is also important to listen, which is exactly what Kay just said. I don't know, the way you talked earlier about it made me think you should be involved in it because it's important. I don't know.
Perhaps I could try.
Yeah, like, I mean, I already rage quit as, as business. I already rage quit, like, so I'm, I'm not rage quitting at all. I'm saying like, I've come back now rather as business as a member of the town council and something that has respect there. So I'm thinking that they, they do, that's the benefit, respect the hierarchy, right? The, the political hierarchy, yeah, that's members at the moment there. So coming as the town council was and being voted on as the town councillor, I think it does feel like I was being listened to a lot more.
So perhaps if, if people want, you know, people vote for me, I'll go to a, a meeting, but maybe we could put it on to the next meeting as well. The next council meeting in case other people.
Because there's not everyone here, yeah. Sorry, you just dropped him in it. You can just say no, obviously, but I just, the way you talked about it earlier, like you are, and you are clearly invested in.
Built me into it then.
No, I just, don't let me.
I'm not talking to you at all. Haven't the last time I.
Okay.
Um, well, okay, all those in favour of me being on?
Yes.
Awkward, isn't it?
I've not done this before, have I?
Against us.
Yes, exactly. That's what I mean. Why do I?
I'd like to speak a minute.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. Right, okay, we will, we're gonna need to extend this, aren't we? Because we've got the. So to assign the mayor's interests while maternity.
She'll be maternity leave, huh?
Oh, yeah, 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 maternity leave, yeah. So there's three things that, um, and I told us that she was still involved with and, um, would like somebody to pick up.
Outside of this meeting, if the rest of the meeting is content, Paul Tilsey has volunteered for the first.
Right, okay.
The second, because I already know some of them.
Okay, okay, any, any other, have there?
I think.
Have you? So, so the ones you've got on the table there, Paul Tilsey for the back of Stratton, Vicky for Royal British Legion and Kenneth.
I've got it into it.
Okay, would you second that? All those in favour? Thank you very much. Right, financial report to approve schedule of payments made between thirteenth of January and second of February. Anything we want to talk about the schedule of payments already made? Okay, so I'm going to approve those. All those in favour? And the schedule of payments.
I was.
Oh, sorry, you have to say, sorry, sorry. Well, same. The second bit is the schedule of payments to be made on the third of February. Does anybody have any comments about those?
Don't need to.
No comment.
Okay, um, are we happy to approve those payments? I propose to approve those payments. Can you second that? Yeah, all those in favour? Those against? Ah, that's.
I'm against, actually.
Oh, you're against? Okay. So one against and three against. Right, okay, so it's twenty fifty-two and, um, can I suggest we extend the meeting to fifteen?
Yeah, it shouldn't take long. Well, you'll be able to cancel us. You'll be able to cancel us.
Just to give us some riddle room, so we're not all speaking in garbled sentences at eight fifty-nine. Can I propose that we extend the meeting to nine fifteen? Okay, all those in favour? Against? Abstaining? Okay. And the second thing is, I, I need to read this out there, Tom. Public Bodies and Missions Meetings Act nineteen sixty, section one, chapter two, and section, sorry, bracket six. To consider passing the following resolution that in relation to the remaining items on the agenda, publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of business to be turned active and the press and public are instructed to withdraw following items confidential and would be perceived as a possession. So can I propose that?
Second one.
All those in favour? So can I ask, oh, all those against? You're against?
Yeah, I, I think we should talk about it in public.
And all those abstaining. Sorry, I said it in that weird way because I didn't have my glasses on. And, okay, so that's carried.